The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Kinnalon Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the Suburban Trends on January 19th, 2025, and posted in the public library and filed with the Borough Clerk. Ms. Francisco, will you roll call the board, please?
Mrs. Leonard?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Mrs. Perella?
Here.
Mr. Pepe?
Here.
Mrs. Portman?
Here.
Mr. Eisenmenger?
Here.
Mrs. Donaldson?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as all.
We have routine matters approval of the minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes for January 7th, January 7th executive session, and January 20th regular meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, could you pull the board, please?
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mrs. Perella?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mrs. Portman?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenmenger?
Yes.
Mrs. Donaldson?
Yes. Saloney.
Hi, y'all. I hope you're doing well. For anyone that doesn't know me, my name is Saloney. I'm a junior here at KHS, and I'd just like to share some accomplishments of the students from the halls of the Kinnalon Public Schools. So we'll start off with Keel Cisco. Keel Cisco kicked off February with our 100th Day of School on February 7th. It was a great day celebrating a fantastic school year today. It is also that time when we began looking ahead to the 2025-2026 school year, with preschool and kindergarten registration actively underway. We are very excited as we prepare to welcome new students to Keel Cisco School. We also recognized Heart Week and Spirit Week February 10th to 14th with a wide range of activities and dress-up days for students to participate in throughout the week. Students participated in a school-wide magical mystery tour scavenger hunt on day one, as well as Heart Health Day with Ms. Baskinger and the KHS peer leaders. Then, on February 13th, we recognized and celebrated our very own Officer Ross Curving on School Resource Officer Appreciation Day. Keel Cisco celebrated Valentine's Day on February 14th. Each class held a party and exchanged Valentines to commemorate the day. Next, kindergarten students held their first-ever school-wide alphabet parade yesterday, February 24th. It was an adorable way for our students to showcase learning the letters of the alphabet and their sounds. And lastly, we are very excited for our second Keisha-sponsored book fair of the school year beginning tomorrow, February 26th. This is the perfect season to celebrate our love of reading during Read Across America next week. Now we'll move on to Stony Brook. February has been an exciting month at Stony Brook. Stony Brook celebrated the 100th Day of School and the 100th Day of School for our 5th grade students. Stony Brook celebrated School Spirit Week during the last week of January, and it was a huge success. We held a student parade on Dress Room Press Day, and the students took a jog around the school with Mrs. Tanga on Workout Wear Day. The week ended with our staff versus 5th grade student kickball game. The students had a great time. Next, our 3rd grade Keisha-sponsored Neon Lights Dance was held on February 7th. It was a wonderful evening of dancing, dinner, and dessert. Thank you to Keisha and to all of our families that attended. Also, our Stony Brook Student Council participated in the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society's Light the Night Campaign campaign. On behalf of Mrs. West and the Stony Brook Student Council members, we are pleased to announce that we raised $5,239, with more money left to count. Thank you to all of our families for their generosity. Our second annual Stony Brook School Talent Show was held on February 14th. The students showcased a variety of incredible talents. Thank you to Mrs. Tanga and Mrs. Lewarski for setting up our event, and thank you to all of our performers and our families who supported their children and attended the event. Also, Valentine's Day was celebrated on February 14th, with each class holding a national class party. National School Resource Officer Day was recognized on February 15th, and we want to say thank you to our Stony Brook School Resource Officers, Officer West and Officer Smith, who work hard every day to keep our staff and students safe. Also, thank you to Keisha for our Mystery Science Assembly. Our students learned about the scientific method and participated in hands-on experiments. Also, we're looking forward to our 4th grade Keisha-sponsored Neon Lights Dance, which will be held on February 28th. Lastly, auditions were held, and the cast has been selected for our first-ever Stony Brook musical production of Moana Junior. The show will be held on June 7th at KHS. Thank you, Keisha, for making this possible. Moving on to PRM, the 7th and 8th Grade Winter Dance was held on Friday, January 31st. We thank the Student Council and Class Committees for making this event possible for all of our students. Also, author, entrepreneur, and Kinnalon resident Maria C. Palmer shared her family's story and positive messages about perseverance with our students in the most recent stories of adversity and resilience presentation. We thank Mrs. Palmer for her excellent presentations. Lastly, the PRM HSA sponsored the annual SEM night on Thursday, February 20th. Students and their families participated in a number of engineering design challenges, including designing a cyber bus, a futuristic chair, and a robotic lad, to name a few. We thank our science supervisor, Mrs. Kowalski, for coordinating this event, and the student volunteers from KHS who helped it to run so well, especially Carrie Ann O'Connor from Learning Exchange, who planned and provided the activities for the night. We're also looking forward to a fun and entertaining PRM talent show on Thursday, February 27th. And lastly, the parent meeting for the 8th grade field trip to Philadelphia and Gettysburg will be held on Thursday, March 6th at 6:30 PM, both in-person and online. A recording of this meeting will be posted afterward. And lastly, moving on to KHS, Senior Marie Levi was named a National Merit Scholarship Corporation finalist. Admission to the program is based on PSAT/NMSQT scores. Overall academic performance and participants' abilities, skills, and accomplishments determine who will be a merit scholar. Only 1% of the 1.5 million qualifying students reach the status of finalist, so congratulations to Marie on this remarkable achievement. Also, congratulations to K-Bowl for winning the NJ Super Bowl tournament and advancing to the state competition. KHS will also present its spring musical SpongeBob on March 6th, 7th, and 8th. Tickets can be purchased throughout the Kinnalon District website. And lastly, the KHS will host a blood drive on February 27th. Please visit the school website to schedule an appointment to donate blood. And that's all.
Thanks, Saloney. Okay, Mr. Mango?
All right, thank you, Mrs. President. Thank you, Saloney. You sure you want to do my presentation? I'm very comfortable sitting here right now. Okay. So, welcome, everybody. Welcome. I am actually happy that I see so many faces. I actually anticipated a packed house and have 497, but I'll take this, because you came on the right night, and not for maybe one or two particular causes, but to actually hear, at this point, updates on district and board goals. This is the night we've done it, ever since I came to and arrived in Kinnalon. It's in February, and then again in June. And so, for anybody who doesn't know, Boards of Education are required to develop district goals in collaboration with Central Office. That is how superintendents, not just in Kinnalon, but in all school districts, are evaluated at the end of the year by the Boards of Ed. And the Boards of Ed, who are elected officials by you, I guess in this case by me, as well as a taxpayer and a citizen of this community, are required to have Board of Education goals, which they evaluate themselves. So that's how having these kind of conversations in public and in open space shows the community the gains or not, or maybe reasons why something sounded good in July and August, and maybe now you might pull back from it. So, we will get to the business of why I know everybody's here, but just bear with me. There's some really good information in here. And for anybody who might kind of get lost in this conversation and the slides, and I understand that, it's a lot to process, there's a lot of history here in these slides, I'd encourage you to go back to the website, take a look at the presentations, take a look at all the documentation, and if all else fails, you could always call me, email me. I'd be happy to show you and guide you through the information. So, we're at the 240-day mark, starting July 1st to now. So the first district goal was financial stewardship. And basically, it was a cost-benefit analysis on exploring condensed transportation routes at PRM and KHS for the 25-26 school year. So that sounds simple, but it really isn't. There's quite a bit of work that goes into that. So that is on the table right now in condensing and collapsing the routes for grades 6 through I'm somebody who likes to get things done, you know? I wanted to have this done for next school year. I'm not quite sure. We have met nonstop, when I say "we," I mean Mr. Chivvis, myself, the business office, our transportation office, our building principals, and have talked about the difference between PRM and the time, because one thing we know is that we are not efficient in our busing. So let me get to it. Option 1, and remember, these are just options, would be that KHS time, start and end, remain the same. PRM, the drop-off time would move from 8:10 up to 7:35. They would have a 15-minute window, because there is a 20-minute window, folks, in the difference between the two buildings, operationally. So that's what we're trying to cover right now. Instruction would start at 7:50, and PRM would end at 2:23. That was an option. That would afford us enough time after all those students are dropped off for the buses to go back out to Stony Brook and Keel. Option 2 would be to move back KHS start time and drop-off time from 7:15 to 7:30, instruction at 7:45, and then they end and they conclude at 2:38. For PRM, their drop-off time wouldn't change much from where they are now. From 7, they would go from 8:10 to 7:45, and their instruction would be 7:55 to 2:28, and they would then get picked up first and follow down. So somebody like me who does not like dysfunction, and trust me, the way we're currently routed in all four buildings at all different times is dysfunction. I just know that as people, we become, you know, accustomed, we just get used to things. It doesn't really work. It's not operational, and our buses are not efficient at all, not just Kinnalon, but we're First Student. And when I talk efficiency, I'm talking about capacity of the buses, and that's where the dollars come into play. So option 3, when all else fails, because we are in collective bargaining with the association right now, and the 20 minutes isn't a secret that we would like to increase at PRM for a variety of reasons, would remain as-is for next year. There would be no consolidation. Assuming that we're successful in our agreement, and the 20 minutes is achieved, we would consolidate for 26-27. So that's option 3. No decision, please, no, no decision has been made. This information will be on the website tomorrow, but obviously, in the budget season, the Board will make a decision between now and the next few weeks with the preliminary budget, and then the final budget adoption on April 29th. But this is something we've talked about at great length, because obviously, going from grade 6 to 8 to 6 to 11 and changing the times and how that looks changes things. If we're successful and we have the 20 minutes at PRM, it doesn't matter what time we start or end, they're the same, and it avoids any type of slip in time in scheduling. What we also found is that, doing this, we would go down from 19 large buses needed to 17, and from six vans to four. So we have that information. What you will receive in May, every parent, is a commitment letter from the Board Office about transportation. So you could please be sure to share that information as well with your neighbors, and for the very reason of, these buses cost a lot of finance and money. Upkeep, routes, and for those that we have to outsource, we're beholden to their increases. We can't compete with that. So if half of our schools are empty on buses, it would really help if parents would work with us on that, because we have a hard time with sustainability, which I'll get into through this presentation. So that's where we are, as far as financial stewardship with our progress. This is what we found. We've developed some options. I know both of them, options 1 and 2, aren't, they're nothing that's going to make anybody get up and dance, but that's why, when in doubt, you can go to option 3 and keep it as-is, wait till, hopefully, we get to 20 minutes, and then it kind of makes sense, and it's a lot easier to maneuver. The second part of Goal 1 for financial stewardship is develop a streamlined approach for the use of facilities in the snack shack, which, you know, I have to tell you, thank you to Mrs. Whitwer and Mr. Burrows, Mr. Chivvis, and Mrs. Schuckers and her team over at the Rec Department. You know, the names and the faces change at different meetings, but we have a centralized building use form for all district events. Mrs. Trombetta gave us a hand with that. We've met, Central Office has met, and Athletics and the Rec Department in August, October, January, and February. That'll continue to be ongoing, very productive. Maintenance updates for KHS snack shack are ongoing, so everybody's kind of on the same page. And we also added security swipe system at the snack shack, which Rec has access to. And so, if in fact anybody loses the swipe, it's not the same as the hard keys. We don't have to spend money or be concerned about that. So, so far, that has gone very, very well, and I want to thank everybody for their time and their commitment. District Goal 2, Student Achievement. There's three subgroups to this, A, B, and C. The first one is to develop a rubric for assessment and effectiveness of the implementation and delivery of the K-5 ELA and math resources. So there'll be a teacher survey going out from Mrs. Todros and Mrs. Thomas to our staff and the K-5, to collect that input on resource effectiveness and the ease of use and alignment. They continuously, with staff, well, Mrs. Utell and Mrs. Alawale, and our new lead teachers that are in play in the elementaries, evaluate all the instructional impact, the student engagement, and areas for improvement. So there's feedback there. And they analyze the ELA and math trends, the strengths, the resource impact, and it'll be further discussed at the April Education and Student Activities Committee meeting. So a lot on the table there as well, and a lot of work by a lot of our stakeholders within the confines of the building. The second one is a big one, alignment of science and math curriculum and course offerings between PRM and KHS. We found this to be an area that needed to be revised. We were successful in hiring Mrs. Kowalski here in the high school as our department chair. She's done a ton of work alongside Mrs. Trombetta, with her staff in both buildings, Mr. Mangan, Mr. Suda, and Mrs. Thomas, in looking for revision for next school year. So what does that mean? The middle school science curriculum overhaul. They're going to do a transition from the spiral structure, which they currently use, to a structured curriculum with Earth Science in 6th, Biology in 7th, and Physical Science in 8th. New resources aligning for NJSLS for the fall of 2025, we're looking to purchase and move forward. The high school STEM pathways expansion, we want to enhance physics and math. So we found that's an area, and earlier in the CIC committee meeting, we were talking about student retention, and, you know, maybe why, some reasons, and when some families reach out about that, they'll say to me, or maybe one of the building principals, you know, all the rankings. And not that I'm somebody who always buys into rankings, but if you're going to put that in front of me, we're going to do our homework. And what we found is that, in our sciences, believe it or not, especially on the heels of last April's meeting, we score very poorly. And a lot that has to do with that is right here in physics and math, and students not having those opportunities as they go forward. So that's what we're looking to change. We are conducting interviews for a science position at KHS, not a new position to the Position Control roster. It's one where a staff member resigned last year, and Mrs. Kowalski felt it would be best for her department to give the sixth-period stipend, but we had that money budgeted, and when all of our chairs came together, they felt that this is what we need. So not lose the position, let's add to the position for engineering and robotics. And we're also offering an algebra-based physics honors course to all grade levels for next school year. So that's, it's a lot of work, and it's on the horizon. Number 3 under Student Achievement, a lot of this links to Goal Number 1, which is why I highlighted it, revising the start and end times to provide staff flexibility and course offerings for 8th grade students for 25-26. So obviously, I've already touched on exploring the adjustment of start-of-end times to support consolidation, exploring flexible staff schedules and expanded course offerings, and discussing a future PRM time increase a day within the CBA to align. So I've said it, but now I'll say it in a different version. In a very hypothetical world, 18 months from now, you could be looking at our 8th graders in the 26-27 school year, whether they're walking across Keel Ave at a certain time of the day and then returning back to PRM, or being housed here in the high school, because I honestly believe if they're housed here, they'll be ingrained. Either way, taking high school electives, not for high school credit, but for credit to get immersed into our programs. So they already take electives at PRM, but this will just be a little bit different. And we are, for anybody here who knows an industrial arts teacher, we're not doing too well with that. We have, we're going to fix our VAC system within that room. We want to bring it back to a little bit more traditional with new twist. Not that a industrial arts teacher would be teaching five different subjects throughout the day. We want to bring back true industrial arts, hands-on for students. Our students wanted it, but nobody's applied yet. So we've been out in front of that. If anybody in here knows someone, please tell them to call me or send an email, because we really don't want to see that program fail. There are other electives within, that we are now developing within the Position Control roster. So a lot of that information will come out, but those will be opportunities that were never offered to our kids before at PRM. So that's Goal 2 in totality. We come to Goal 3, Student Experience and Retention. What we'd like to do is create a freshman academy for next school year for 25-26. The launch is tentative, because again, we do have a lot of balls in the air. We could always pivot and make it 26-27, but this is what we found and what we've come up with so far, is that there'd be a 9th grade core teacher team that meets regularly for student progress and curriculum alignment. We do not have that. We're going to have a peer leadership program from within for team building and mentorship. We'd like to create a freshman seminar, and then this is where that junior high school... Oh, did it go out? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, folks. Technology. Yeah? I could just roll with it if I have to, but I just got to be able to see on here. Yeah? Okay, to not hold up, folks, I'm just going to keep going, and I know that's not the best scenario, but, oh, there we go. Okay. I have to go back a little. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thanks, Matt. So the last bullet as well falls into play, like an 8th grade junior high school experience and elective offerings. That's huge for our students. And look, many of you have children in the middle school, or had children in the middle school, just like I have. They come into high school, it's all the same, sometimes elective programs or other options and choices, it just kind of falls on deaf ears. I think what we'd like to do would change that. That would be a paradigm shift for us. B and C is the 8th grade KHS exposure initiatives further, and what we've done so far, thanks to Mr. Mangan and Mr. Suda, is implemented a shadow day. We're definitely going to revise how we operated within the confines of the shadow day, but that was a day where students came down, looking to increase it to a full day for our 8th graders in November. They came across and attended a pep rally on October 18th for Spirit Week on Color Day. And we're also planning an 8th grade week post-spring break this year, where they'll come down and be part of the high school activities. So it's a lot, but that's okay. It's good. Change is good. District 4, Communication. So community outreach, we've expanded the K-12 sports collaboration with Rec, as I touched on earlier. Our special services initiatives continue to grow between Diversity Derby, Ability Awareness, Mrs. Davidman and her team and our advisors had a fantastic low dance event and veteran partnerships. And then also, the Tri-Borough for Field Hockey reached out to me, and Mrs. Whitwer put that out to our staff, if anybody was interested in coaching for Bloomingdale, Butler, and Kinnalon. And Mrs. Schuckers had expressed that there was some interest in the, in our community for a possible rec fencing program, which I offered her Keel School right out of the gate if she needed it. So a lot there happening. K-12 club engagement with the community. Mrs. Thomas and I had the pleasure of visiting Cedar Crest to collaborate and discuss their newsletters and extended matinee invites, and also, obviously, for the intergenerational prom. We'd also like to schedule our Student Council to go visit folks up at Cedar Crest. I think it would be eye-opening for them, to talk to them. It's at a whole group, a whole room of retired educators. And I grew up with my grandparents. I believe that that's necessary for all young people to talk to their grandparents and be with them, because there's a lot to learn from the older generation. Now, Board of Education Goals. There's four. So the first one is the Board's Self-Evaluation and Functionality Improvement. So there was a special executive session on February 1st, on a Saturday, where we met for, it had to be somewhere around four hours, the Board, and we just discussed, you know, what we were doing, how we were operating. It's a good opportunity to throw ideas back and forth, and then also, obviously, discuss the 23-24 evaluation and how they felt they were progressing. So that was, that was an opportunistic time for us. The Return to Play Initiative, which we talked about in CIC, we discussed it in the February Policy Committee meeting. We're also looking to have a subcommittee forum, so anybody who's now walking in later, we're looking for subcommittee members, K-12, we're also going to be depending on our staff, K-12 and our admin, to work together in a subcommittee to bring recommendations on policies for AI, for electronic use, for our cellphones, more or less, and then also, Return to Play and Let It Grow initiative to the Board for May approval, first reading on policy. So that's a lot of work. I do promise that I'll be flexible. We can do hybrid meetings like this, where you're in-person or not. We could do total Zooms. We could do whatever you want, but I do need folks to just give a hand. And I know your time's already well-spent, but I'd like to get that input on this before we make that change. And then facility upgrades and referendum by June 30th. Right now, we are on our second bond from your last construction, which was June of Thankfully, Mrs. Francisco had the wherewithal to bring to my office and the Board the opportunity to refinance, to save us roughly, I don't know, Mrs. Francisco, was that $80,000 a year going forward in the life of the bonds?
About $800,000.
About $800,000. So something you have to ask yourself is, like in 2019, when I passed a ballot question and won 3 to 1 in Warren County, which is no easy feat, you have to ask yourself why when the interest rate was 1.1, we weren't thinking about it here. I only throw that out because, because of that debt, we still feel, even with the $800,000 bump to save us, it's not the time to go out for a referendum. So you could put that to rest. If we needed to in an emergency circumstance, like a real emergency circumstance, as we were starting to get close in Stony Brook School last year with the mold at the end, I know Mrs. Utell and I were holding our breath, that's a different story. Then we have options and choices, but right now, that's off the table. We did engage for an ESIP, for an Energy Savings Improvement Program. It's something I have a little bit of experience with in another district, as well as Mrs. Francisco. All the paperwork is submitted, and that would be for lighting upgrades, HVAC and boiler upgrades. All three, we need everywhere. We need it everywhere. So those things, I know they're not impressive when we're talking about it, they're awful expensive. When they break and they don't function, it can close school, and it's necessary. It's just a necessary evil, unlike, you know, no different than our homes. So we're trying to be very creative within our budget and within our own framework to not go back out to the taxpayers and do this and do our due diligence. So we're there. And then number 4, the cellphone-free school environment. Previous steps, we closed the Wi-Fi last school year in the high school, except for during lunch. In 24-25, PRM students had, were not permitted to walk around with the cellphones anymore, they needed to put them away. And then, of course, obviously, all of the other information below, you could see that I don't need to talk, you know, at you or about this much further. I will tell you, the K-5 parents were very strong about no cellphones in school. So that's easy for us. That's an easy one. Easy fix. Old school. God forbid, principals will call you. You need us, you call the school, or just come to the school, like my parents did. It's not that hard, but cellphones will be out there. So that's the update on the Board Goals and the District Goals. I don't hope I didn't bore anybody. Now, some future dates to remember, right? Big events. So on the 11th, Mrs. Francisco and I will be presenting to the Board and the public the 25-26 preliminary budget presentation and adoption. That's required, and then it has to be certified down to the county. will call you. You need us, you call the school or just come to the school, like my parents did. It's not that hard. Um, but cell phones will be out there. So that's the update on the board goals and the district goals. I don't hope I didn't bore anybody. Now some future dates to remember, right? Big events. So on the 11th, Mrs. Francisco and I will be presenting to the board and the public the 25-26 preliminary budget presentation and adoption. That's required and then it has to be certified down to the county office. And then we still have some flexibility where we have between then and the first week of May to have our final adoption, right? So that lands on our April 29th meeting. March 25th, one month from today, this will look very different. This will be a packed house because it will be K-12, um, student achievement, which I love. Those are the best parts of any one of our meetings anytime. So that'll be a big event. I'm sure some of you in here will be called to come to that event with your children. Then the April 29th meeting is our renewal, non-renewals, um, and the budget presentation for the following year and adoption total. On the 20th of May, it's Teacher of the Year Retire Re-recognition. Then on May 27th, and I know it's a tight window, but we did it last year. We want to do it again. We had a lot of success with our community, uh, with the tri-form and that will be a joint effort again. So you'll, but it'll look a little bit different this time because it won't just be myself and Mrs. Thomas, Mrs. Trombetta, and Mrs. Davidman. We're gonna, we're gonna tie in our department chairs. You'll have Mrs. Todros, you'll have Mrs. Jexo, you're gonna have, uh, Mrs. Kowalski. You may even have some teaching staff that have asked for some things within the budget that, hey, it's your opportunity. Get out, tell parents how great this is because they're the ones that have our kids. Um, so it's gonna look real different and that's where all that stuff comes into play that I'm kind of touching on and the excitement we have going into next year in the future. And then of course, the June 10th public meeting, uh, is student-wide recognition and it's always a madhouse at the end of the year with all the graduations and the ceremony. So, um, if you want to come and you could be here, great, you're always welcome. If you watch online, that's fine too. So I put that out there to you. So now, knowing folks were coming, I figured this is a good opportunity to engage once again about agenda and non-agenda items that are out there. So the first one, a little bit of history. Student council, Mr. Suda, Mr. Mangan, myself, Mrs. Thomas, we meet with student council. We talk. And sometimes we hear a little too much, but, uh, but it's okay. It's refreshing. And one thing that's always at the center of every conversation with our kids in the high school is the food. Shocker. So, um, last year, Machios, who is our vendor, came in and met with the FFS committee and we had a very, um, I say constructive conversation about expectations. And then this school year starts and we have more conversation with our students and Machios came in and we said, look, we want to give our kids, at least in the high school, opportunities to eat different kind of foods. What does that mean? And they told us about what our options would be, which would be leaving the national school lunch program. So they came in, met again with the FFS committee and I and Mrs. Francisco last month, I believe that was in February. Um, and what that does is it opens the lunch options here in the high school. It's different ingredients used, the guideline expansion from the Department of Agriculture. You're not handcuffed. So more or less I'm saying, um, you could have sandwiches like they would go buy somewhere else in town or food available. And then it's a new and improved menu. So what we wanted to do was run that as a pilot for May, uh, for April and May. So the business office will be sending parents a letter in March. We look to put it on the March 25th agenda for approval. And, um, cost goes up from $4.25 to $7, obviously, but that comes with not being handcuffed and the options that they currently have. And if it's something that we like or it's a road we want to travel, then we'll have more discussion with the, with our students and something we could put out to parents as that option for here in the high school. We weren't looking to do it in the K-8 just yet. But like you, right? I live here, I hear, why can't we be like Montville? Why can't we have this one? Why can't, trust me, anybody who has that is paying as well. So cost is going to go up with the quality, but that you could definitely look for that. It's coming. I'd be remiss if I didn't speak on under the B section with the principals and their new roles come July 1. I want to make it clear before I even start because social media does that as well. It twists things or tries. This is not derogatory by any means. Another piece of my job and what I do and I take great pride in is evaluating staff. I do have a track record. Don't have an LLC. You won't find me on social media, but I have my own tree branch of superintendents in the state and those who are assistant superintendents and principals and assistant principals and finding staff at all levels and moving them up, even some BAs. That's what I enjoy doing. So my job is to observe formally, informally, all the time and have conversations and build relationships. And I could promise you as a superintendent and as a parent of a student just like you, that these three folks, Mrs. Alawale, Mr. Mangan, and Mr. Suda, you won't find better anywhere else. I get to see them highlighted every day, all of their intangibles that they have, and it doesn't always operate that in other districts. I'm sure for folks who've moved to Kinnalon, you might find things different than maybe somewhere else. Or those of you in the educational field, I have found nothing but collaboration, respect, honor, all the time. Anything we've ever asked, we all work together. It is a together unit. But once I see something, it's, okay, how, how would this look and how would this work? And all of them have a variety of different experiences. And now I know that, I'm privy to the information. And Mr. Suda started his career in a middle school and he was a coach for 20 years of his life, that he has a, a presence factor unlike quite a few other people I've ever seen. Sometimes necessary. I look over at Mr. Mangan, his ability to talk to parents that are upset, dare I say hid, especially here. I never lose this is cool. Calm, direct, nose vertical and horizontal articulation like you've never seen. Started his career as a K-8 principal in Southern Bergen County, not too far away from me. And actually, for a few months, was an acting superintendent when the superintendent there was run out. You didn't know that, but I do. Hired here for Stony Brook. So if anybody's having second doubts, this isn't a sell. I'm just letting you know how confident I am and appreciative I am for all three of them. And then you got Mrs. Alawale, a ball of energy and lightning, right? For the parents of Keel, let's see what they see and watch what they watch. Started in Newark as an assistant principal in a building of almost double this high school. Worked her way up, K-8 principal, bigger than this high school, all by herself. No supervisors, no department chairs, not all the other levels, all alone. And in the first conversation, always talked about moving forward where she wanted to be. So I sat on all this for two and a half years, watched, observed, had great conversations. No, we don't always agree and that's impossible. Think about the holidays when you're at the table with your family. Everybody, everybody agree? I don't think so. But we're pretty close. So I just wanted to say that, um, I know it's on there. This is a voluntary transfer. They had the choice to make it involuntary. But we live in America and it's voluntary and voluntary. They chose what they chose. I have the utmost respect for them and I hope that anybody who's, who's talking out there gives them a chance to show you. And then if it doesn't work out, come back and see me in two years, but you have to give it that much time at a minimum, but trust my judgment. You may not like the school calendar tonight and I get it, but trust my judgment. I'm never wrong about people. So I'm not gonna congratulate anybody yet because I'm superstitious, but, um, I'm very excited. And then so, number three, Stony Brook School. So here we go. That, that, and I don't like to respond to social media, but if my phone is going to be constantly invaded with messages and text messages and phone calls and stuff 24 hours a day, and look, this is my career and my life, I don't do it for a show. Then I'm gonna address it. So yes, Stony Brook School was a conversation as I shared in the CAC. Thank you, Mrs. Castellano Smith. You were very respectful and nice, much more than some other folks. It's a conversation, folks. When I see things, I can't turn away. And the bottom line is that we have a budget of $46 million for 1,600 students. That's equivalent to a school district that has 2,000 to 2,200 students. You don't have them. You haven't had them. You're not going to have them. So when I sit across the table from the mayor and the council and we're sitting with the board or I'm in Stop and Shop and somebody gets me in the aisle when I'm looking for, uh, coffee or something, how can I look people in the face when I'm paying taxes just like you and pretend that it doesn't exist? Hence the Stony Brook conversation. Not something I, I intend to do. It's not on an agenda next year at all. I don't want Mrs. Utell to be upset. That's not what this is. But it's out there, so let me give you accurate information. Yes, it was a conversation. That if we have space at some point and we can't balance our budget without having stress and agita and blood pressure through the roof and issues and concerns that grew well over a decade by a different board and different administration that we have to deal with because this isn't fun, you gotta come up with solutions. But that is my last ever solution. Trust me. I'm not into that business. We're not a ghost town, but our schools are what they are. Our high school can fit 773 students. You have 509. Middle school could fit 540. You got 380. Keel School's tight. Stony Brook has space once the kindergarten left. So it's not too far off the course and crazy. That's my job. The board pays me to do a job. Come up with some solutions. That doesn't mean we're doing it. It just means it's out there, but it doesn't mean it's happening. So please, not on the radar, but that's the history there. And anybody whoever wants more information about the demographic study or missed it or numbers or whatever, please feel free, call me or send me an email and I give you that information. It's all on the website. We've talked about it, but that is not an option. That is a last ditch resort and to me and to the board, I could, this is one of the one times I'll speak for the board. Nobody's gonna do that. Okay? But it's very difficult to balance the budget. So with that, let me come up to the school calendar while you're all here. So I'm not gonna lie, I believe in an August start date, but I also see where, I've only received six emails. So everybody knows. Six. So I find it disappointing that a lot of folks would go to social media or come here before they'd even call me or if you see me, just talk to me. I'll give you an answer what I think. Doesn't mean it's written in stone, but that's okay. You know, that's life, such is life. Um, I believe in an August start date, but I also see for some of the folks that wrote to me very eloquently in their emails about the four half days. So let me break it down to you and put it in two, two versions. Number one, as you notice on the agenda tonight, there is a sidebar with the association. Thank you, Mrs. Suffin, Mr. Stroud and Dr. Racine and company. One of the many. So this couldn't happen without our teachers because it's not in their collective bargaining yet, not in their agreement. This has been talked about for, I don't know, a year in committees. It, I don't know, somewhere around there, but it's not something that's really up for public debate. It's the privy of the board. So you have to be a board member to be privy to it. The reason for the two half days in September, right after the Labor Day, is because from that point on, annually, we have to provide the district, we, 20 hours of professional development to our staff. That's where it comes from. But I see those points. And if that's what some folks, if that's an olive branch later on in the meeting and that's what you're looking for and you want me to find those two days and move them over somewhere else in the calendar as half days for now, for next year, one year, I don't have an issue with that. We could revise it right at the table. But the two days in August as half days for our kids starts with the heat and having the opportunity. So unlike last year, when I'm receiving phone calls from four different buildings at two o'clock in the afternoon or one o'clock in the afternoon, so we are, it's difficult to dismiss with the heat indexes that we're not walking in circles. And it also gives us an opportunity as I list here, we want more instructional time. So make no bones about it. This is not babysitting. My expectations, and I'm saying it now, if this calendar is approved today, next year, whenever, as long as I'm here, those days in August are used for diagnostics, for assessments, for learning styles. So that's going to mean our children, yours and mine, will have homework over that holiday break because when they come in, they're expected to turn it in. And now our staff can utilize that information to their capability and maximization. That's the idea, to get out in front because we lose so many days with other things. And once state testing is over and AP testing is over, I gotta tell you folks, you're hanging on, meaning the schools, and then you're dealing with the heat and everything else to the end of the year. The two half days in August without the staff doing the professional development is kind of like, right? We're almost at a winter. I, I don't, right? We still have two emergency days left. It's like if you were ever like me and went to the Jersey Shore on a Memorial Day weekend, you want to run into the ocean. I've never done that. I watched a lot of people do it. I might put my foot in the ocean and see how it feels first. That's the idea. What I can promise you and guarantee you is that if this goes forward, 26-27, the days in August would be still half days for our children, but the staff would get their PD then. And then so when we come back Labor Day, they're immediately, they're right on out, full days. But you have to start somewhere. And honestly, after Mrs. Thomas's presentation a couple months ago and the fact that we have to have a corrective action plan per the state because of absenteeism in all the buildings, are we gonna draw straws and argue about two days in August? I'm not expecting people that have planned vacations, if you've done that that well in advance or a once-in-a-lifetime thing this year, I don't expect you to bring them in. But that's no different than when parents call any of our principals right now and say, hey, guess what? We're gonna be out for 14 days, two weeks from now. So I just don't see it. It gives us an edge. My job is students in all facets. You don't have to agree with me. I'm not gonna argue with anybody tonight. You have your right, but so do I. And this is what I believe. And just so you know, here are some other districts. So once again, what I have to listen to from some folks, not all, certainly not everybody in this room, Mountain Lakes. Well, guess what? Mountain Lakes starts in August. Why can't we do this? Why can't we, well, just take a look. This is where the state is going. And yes, of course, for next year, you'll see my former district. I left before that contract. They're expired, but that was an end goal. Hackettstown will be. So now you're talking Warren County, Hackettstown, Phillipsburg, Warren Hills, the southern end of the county over there, bordering Morris County, bordering West Morris Regional, bordering Chatham, bordering Mendham. There's other districts that do it. If you have a vacation and you paid for it, don't lose the money. Go. When the schedules come out, the teachers, I'm sure, will give you all the information you need. But quite honestly, it's no different than when you, when kids are pulled out, September 1st to June 20th or whatever the end date is, for a variety of reasons and have 30 or 40 absences. Okay? That's the way I see it. I'm not asking you have to agree. If you want to blame anybody, blame me. I have big shoulders, or at least I used to. And really, that's, I know that was a lot. I thank you for, I'm glad, actually, you are all here. This is a good night to be here and you got a lot of good information. So, um, I don't know there, Mrs. President. I think I'm done talking, especially without a cup of coffee or some water. So I'm gonna call it.
Okay, so next up we have committee reports. And I will be conducting the finance committee report. Um, the finance of facilities and security committee did meet on February 18th. We had a very long meeting. We had a lot of stuff to discuss because a lot of the facilities issues have a big impact on the budget and we're creating the budget. Um, we talked about the, the gym floor in the new gym. Um, there's potential that some of it might be also due to the fact that the heat in the gym, I know a lot of people who go there often, it gets really hot. And we came to find out that the heating control element for that part of the building, the new part of the building, hasn't been working. the new part of the building, hasn't been working properly and the staff has actually been tripping the breaker to turn it on and off. So our new facilities manager, Ralph Burrows, has looked at proposals to upgrade that with through train, so that will be in a budget item that we're budgeting for. It's about 30, 32, $39,000, but it's not in this agenda. But it was really interesting to find out that because of that heat, people have been leaving the doors open and the doors open create a lot of moisture that come in and that might also be a potential for why the floor is warping. We have some environmental engineering proposals also that are going out to see if there's also some kind of groundwater coming up, but at this point, we still don't know why there's moisture. Once we closed the door, the moisture levels did go down, so that was really positive information. The track needs to be resurfaced, though estimates are coming in. We also need to do something with permanent lacrosse netting, so all of that's going to be looked at and potentially added to the sure's budget as we form the budget. We do need to pave and mill the service roads for KHS and Keel. Those quotes won't come in until after March or mid-March when they're back to paving. Catch basins in all the schools need to be updated. That's probably part of this budget cycle. We looked at an auditorium auditory upgrade to this facility. It's about $600,000. And then a potential for esports, that's another 300. So that's a decision the board's gonna have to evaluate because it's quite expensive, so we'll be continuing to look at that, probably not in this year, but maybe moving forward. We do have a Phase Three tech to upgrade the servers in each of the building, and so that'll be ongoing discussion. There is a charisma cybersecurity that is on the agenda for approval tonight, and we are recommending we do that. It's 7,000 for an annual subscription, and if we approve it tonight, we get it for free until July 1st. So this will give us an opportunity to use this as it scans the vulnerabilities in our internet, in our network, and it also has dark web monitoring and a couple of other things, so it's a pretty good deal for the seven grand. We are also recommending the Light Path that's on the agenda for approval for the Stony Brook PRM. That's the fiber optics. That's it for finance. We have up next is education personnel.
Hi, good evening. We had a brief and, you know, normal personnel committee meeting a couple of weeks ago where you see most of the things that are on the agenda under B, you know, the normal staff issues and things like that. And then we've also had our first meeting in terms of negotiations with the KEA, not going in into anything other than just to say, my impression was that it was both substantive and collegial and it was obvious to me, again, this is personal opinion, but that everybody had put a lot of time and effort and energy into preparing for it and being ready to, you know, do the work. So thank you. I just wanna say thank you to Tina and everybody that's on your side, and we'll have more hopefully soon.
Yeah, it was very positive. Thank you. It was a very positive meeting. Kelly, education?
Sure. So I just hope everybody can be patient. We had two really long meetings this month, so it's gonna take me a while to go over everything, but it's really important. There's just some fabulous stuff going on. I wanna make sure the people at home can hear me. Okay, so our first meeting was held on February 13th, and this was kind of a unique meeting because we had three groups of teachers come in back in the spring of 2022 that said to us they either wanted to start programs or change curriculum. So we were actually hearing back from the teachers on this specific date to find out how it went. So the first thing that we talked about was our new transition program. Wendy Kane and Lori Joyce came. They did a fantastic job. We used to outsource our transition program and they wanted to get the certifications to keep it in-house. Our transition program is a special education program for our students that are 18 to 21. It focuses on vocational skills, work training, life skills, and it helps with like job training. So they were able to establish the program. It is thriving. It is doing really, really well. I'm so excited for our students, and I'm just gonna give a shout out to all the companies that are supporting our kids because I, for me personally, I like to support things that are supporting our special needs community. Our students have placements at Walgreens, the YMCA in Mountain Lakes, Applebee's, Machio's, Kinnon Library, Kinnon Food Pantry, and they also work in our preschool program and our inclusive program. So they go every week and they work out at Kinnon Sports and Fitness and the Martial Arts in West Milford, and our program is really thriving. It is a small program, but they have even gone so far as to like connect with the surrounding special needs program so that our students can really have a socialization with other students. So that program is just doing so very, very well, and we are so grateful to them for coming to us and for, for starting the program. Also, Karen Jexo and Faith Vanderzee came to us because they wanted to move away from Teachers College as our English curriculum and move towards something that aligned with the standards better. I know as a parent, I'm jumping up and down with this change, but this has been absolutely phenomenal. The new curriculum aligns to the New Jersey state standards. The teachers know exactly what they're teaching. Our kids are assessing better when we ask them. They're learning grammar for the first time in a very long time. We have phonics books. We have the IXL English being used from K to eight. We're piloting in ninth grade. The full class novel is back. I am very excited about that. It's absolutely phenomenal. The kids actually are learning a lot about Edgar Allan Poe and they're going to see a play on him. I mean, they're really excited about these field trips that are come back now that we have the full class novel. The sequence of reading, comprehending, synthesizing, and then taking information and writing a summary are all happening at the same time instead of breaking, reading into one unit and then writing into one unit. It's allowing our kids to kind of just do more and be more prepared for all the subjects. So we are just so grateful to Karen Jexo and Faith Vanderzee for coming forward to us with that, and it's just been phenomenal. Rebecca Baskinger wanted to start mindfulness classes, small group and individual pullout and a Zen Den. This, this is across all of the schools. Mrs. Baskinger is a physical education teacher. She's been providing social scaffolding, conflict resolution skills, mindfulness coping skills, Dear Younger Me, Letters to Self, that the kids are really connecting with. She's been helping the students connect to nature and being more mindful through a lot of different activities like building up their wellness toolkit and working out and using sports. If you don't know Mrs. Baskinger, she's just a phenomenal, really positive role model for our students, and she's teaching them how important it is that any problem that they face, they can handle and that they are resilient and that they are strong and that they can overcome. So it's really just an additional resource that we're providing to our, our students outside of academics. Then our second meeting was on Wednesday, February 19th. Mr. Vinnie Shivers came and talked to us about our, last year, we did have an increase in our HIB numbers, so just as a preventative measure, we're going to be recruiting the prosecutor's office and we're going to have just a program brought in for our students where they kind of focus on cyber bullying and social media challenges. It's developmentally appropriate. It's perfect for our students. It's really gonna help them understand what HIBs are, why kids get them, how to avoid them and not get them, you know, and really make it a better, stronger, more positive culture. We had something happen recently. We're an administrator in one of our buildings, really stepped into a medical emergency and was able to help one of our students, and it was phenomenal that that person was there, but it made us start thinking that we really want more of our administrators and more of our after-school activity supervisors to be properly trained on AED, CPR, EpiPens and stop the bleeding training. We just feel like it's better for our students if you're alone in the building, if you're out, you know, with a team working on something, you need to be prepared. God forbid anything happens to a staff member or to a student. We also have a special education activities update. Councilman Lewis, Mrs. Davidman and Melanie Schuckers got together. They really wanna pull the recreation department, the special needs students and the town resources together to provide more for our students. So there's gonna be an all abilities bowling night in March that I'm really excited about. I know we just had our first ever glow dance, a sensory friendly glow dance for our PRM and KHS students, which was phenomenal. We had great attendance at that. We are gonna have our second annual diversity derby day. We're gonna have that at Stony Brook, which was phenomenal. If you were there last year, if you weren't there, definitely try to make it. It's a great day for the kids and see if your kids can volunteer at it because it's really fun. We're also gonna, they're also gonna work on having a unified track team. Track's a great sport that all kids at all levels can join, so we're gonna work on scaffolding that. We talked about credits to graduate. Currently, Kinnon has 140 credits to graduate. We talked about the possibility of going to 130. In the state of New Jersey, you only need 120. We do have AP students that just really go above and beyond and wind up with like 160, but we also have students that, you know, school is not their thing, so maybe lowering our, our credits would be better. We're still gonna be 10 points above the state average, so I think it just meets a lot of our students where they are a little bit better. So we talked about the possibility of that. We also talked about creating policy around class rank. We currently do that, but we don't have a policy around it, so I know we're gonna be working on that. We had sent out, we talked about this last month, but we had sent out to all the students at PRM and KHS what electives the kids wanna see, and what we heard back from them was we really, they really want a theater class, they really want industrial arts, and moving forward, not next year, but in the future, a culinary teacher. So Mrs. Trombetta and Mrs. Thomas are working diligently on obtaining those specific certifications so that we can start offering those electives to our students immediately, and the kids are really excited about that. The next thing I'm really excited about, I know a lot of work went into this by Mrs. Thomas and Mrs. Trombetta, so I really wanna give a shout out to them. The pathways are really important for our students. A lot of our students that go into STEM fields, whether it be like math or computer science or any, anything in science, anything in math, anything in engineering, you have to take certain classes as prerequisites for other classes. So what they've done in the program of studies is they have created, if you're in the high school and you want to apply and you already know you wanna be in an engineering field or you wanna be in a math field or a science field, there is a flow chart of basically the classes that you need to take and in what order for the prerequisites. And it's really gonna set our kids up for success because sometimes you get to junior year and you wanna take a class, but you haven't taken the prerequisites. So this is really just gonna give a snapshot to kids so that you can look at it whether they're in seventh grade or eighth grade or ninth grade, and you can kind of see the trajectory of where they should be and what classes they should be taking. We also have new dual enrollment courses, which are phenomenal for our students. If you don't know, this dual enrollment means you're gonna get credit at high school, but you're also gonna get credit at college. These classes are brought to us from colleges and they are actual syllabuses that are being taught at colleges around the country, and they're also being taught to our kids, which is phenomenal. They get the credits without taking the AP test at the end, so it's really great for our students. So we're gonna be able to offer multi-variable calculus, ceramics, and we have a really exciting program that's starting. It's a dual enrollment program with Rider University. It's gonna, it's called Tomorrow's Teachers. So if anybody is interested in becoming a teacher or an educator, this is gonna give them a leg up. Sophomore year, they're gonna apply to the program, and then junior and senior year, they're gonna be in the program, and the program will have, the, the students will use electives in order to take these classes, but they can take classes in education. They'll also have an internship connected with it that our Kinnon schools will provide to them, and they'll have to create lesson plans and teach. This is something really, really amazing that our kids are gonna have a leg up with if they wanna become an educator when they apply to colleges. So it's just, thank you so much for always creating opportunities for our students to do so well and really be competitive with all the local schools around. We have a lot of honor societies at Kinnon High School, so we're talking about the possibility right now of condensing them and kind of all having them on one night or kind of scheduling them and figuring out kind of how we're gonna make that work. But a lot of our honor society kids are in multiple honor societies, so it's also really nice for parents, I think, to kind of celebrate them on one day. We are gonna have the summer, summer math academy this year. We started this last year. It's been phenomenal. It's for our PRM, KHS kids that really wanna get ahead in the summer and kind of wanna jump ahead in math. We're offering geometry, precalculus honors and intro to algebra. We are gonna have elementary enrichment again, which is phenomenal. That's before school. It's gonna be starting on March 3rd. And the Machio's pilot program, I know Mr. Mango already spoke about this, but it, it is a common complaint that the kids want better food, so we're gonna pilot it. We're gonna try it in the month of April and May. The food prices will go up, but the quality will go up as well, so we'll see how that goes, and if the kids love it, then we'll do it for next year. Thank you so much.
Busy meeting, huh? Policy?
Okay, so the policy committee met a week ago on Tuesday. We have some big policies to consider that we're mulling over. One has to do with acceptable use of AI in the classroom, in the school. The committee feels that we need to gather input from our educators to see how they are already using AI, how maybe AI might be disruptive, how it affects their classroom so that we can, you know, design a policy that will benefit them and the students in the classroom. But we also wanted to reach out to the Citizens Advisory Committee to get input from parents as well and any residents regarding AI and any, any suggestions they might have, any experiences they might have that will help guide us creating, it's like a monster of a policy, so we really wanna do it well. So we're still trying to gather information. If anybody's interested in being in a subcommittee, you can let myself know or Mr. Mango know. The other big policy that we're still kind of continuing to mull over and figure out is use of electronic communication devices, and this is really, how far do we go as far as regulating cell phones in schools? Again, we're looking, you know, we did the survey with parents. We're looking for, again, another subcommittee to really kind of get into it and also input from our educators as well. And the goal is to have both of these policies first reading by May. Then we also reviewed policy regarding class rank. Our current policy is like one sentence and it doesn't give a lot of details. It also doesn't match perfectly with our student handbook. So we looked at other schools locally that have kind of a similar rigor as Kinnon and what they're doing for class rank, and we're working on creating a rough draft and being sure that it aligns with our handbook. We looked at also Policy 5460, which is regarding high school graduation, like Kelly mentioned. Kinnon requires 140 credits. The state requires 120. Again, we looked at local schools who have kind of a similar rigor as Kinnon, and they all have 130, 120, 135. One has, we talked about would this affect the rank of Kinnon or the reputation? The feedback we received from administration is that colleges don't look at minimum credits. They're looking at that actual courses that students take, the rigor, their grades, SAT scores, all of those kind of things. And so are really motivated, high achieving students are going above and beyond the minimum of 140. And then we have students that are kind of doing the traditional track, and then we have another group of students that are meeting the state minimum and even the 130, and they're stretching to reach that 140 by taking an elective, maybe a second time or something like that. And these students might benefit by being able to get out each day slightly earlier and work a job, attend an internship, something productive and perhaps more productive than taking an elective that they're not very interested or motivated to take. So we are working on a rough draft. We're considering 130 credits minimum with the caveat that somebody who kind of fits the, the requirements or whatever that we're going to set could do like an early release at 120 credits. do like an early release at 120 credits. But we're still working on that. You know, please provide input if you have any, any ideas or concerns about that. And then we talked about return to play. That's one of our board goals. Like Mr. Mango said, our committee is not super well-versed with the return to play, so we want to kind of gain a little more experience on the concept of that. And then we also wanted to reach out, again, to the Citizens Advisory Committee for anyone that wants to be part of a subcommittee is with that as well. The idea is really, there's theories that say education can be enhanced by providing time in students' days to be less structured, to move a little more freely. And there's, from my understanding, again, I'm not an expert, that research shows that this then helps other forms of education and learning throughout the day. So we're looking into that and how we might be able to incorporate that into our students' days. And then the other thing is, we're still looking at the AP exam reimbursement that had been discussed prior. We want to get feedback on just how much financially that would cost, you know, an estimate, basically, and then try to work that into the budget and, and, you know, the administration rules and things like that.
Do we, for that AP reimbursement, I know we talked about it, but we really haven't looked at the financial side of that, right? So we don't have the numbers for-
Right. We don't have numbers yet, so before we want to set a policy-
Yeah.
-we wanted to see just how much will that affect-
Right. Because that's, what's that at now, 120 test? I think, yeah. Yeah, I think it's about 120 a test, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, no, you don't, because it goes directly to college board. Okay. Yeah, that will, we would definitely have to look at the numbers for that, because there's a lot of kids that take that. Okay, thanks, Jen. All right. Delegates, do we, New Jersey school boards, do you have anything, Jen, for that? Morris County school boards, anything?
That's from-
Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry. Carl?
Yeah, there's just two updates for them. They've got two upcoming award ceremonies in April and in May, Unsung Heroes, and then the annual Nancy Helbock Memorial Awards, where they're gonna honor some students and teachers and such. But I'll have more updates next time, too.
Legislative?
Yeah, I had two things. One was that the governor presented his budget address this morning. From my quick understanding, he was increasing the statewide allocation to education to the tune of $400 million. I don't know that that means anything for us specifically, but we'll find out. And second, I saw in the NJ SBA's blurb about use of cell phones, restricting use of cell phones, but not in the classroom by board members at board meetings. And to anybody that's wondering, I actually was reading my notes from the policy meeting on my cellphone, so I'm not in favor of that, but that was Cherry Hill, so.
Morris County Educational Services?
Next meeting's March 12.
Okay. All right. Community relations? You guys haven't met, have you? Is that, that's you? Oh, right, right. But the KALI is on, did you?
I see you.
Yeah, have, did they?
I see you.
Okay. She did get ahold of you. Okay, excellent. All right. K-Cares and Education Foundation, we're not doing that anymore. K-Cares, are you, have you had a chance to get in?
No update.
Okay, all right. Okay, we are now at petitions and hearings of citizens for agenda items. You are welcome to come up and address the board. You can use that mic, and depending on how many people come up, I'll probably time it to two minutes a person.
Board members, community members, and supporters of our education system. Today I stand before you to discuss a matter of profound importance, the removal of Rosh Hashanah from the school calendar and its impact on Jewish students, staff, and families in our community. Rosh Hashanah marks the Jewish New Year, a time of reflection, renewal, and connection to faith and heritage. It is followed closely by Yom Kippur, a day of atonement and deep introspect. These are the two highest holy days in the Jewish faith. The day, these days are more than just holidays. They are the spiritual foundation of Jewish life and culture. For Jewish students, these days represent a moment to pause, to connect with their faith, and to be with their families. They are vital to their identity and sense of belonging. In recent years, the rise in antisemitism has made it increasingly difficult for Jewish individuals to feel safe and secure in their own communities. A striking statistic shows that 77% of American Jews feel less safe as a result of October 7, 2023. These attacks have served as a brutal reminder of a very real danger Jewish people face, and not just abroad, but right here in the United States, where discrimination and hatred are increasingly prevalent. Nearly six in 10 American Jews have changed their behaviors due to fears of antisemitism in 2024. This growing sense of insecurity is something we must confront head-on, both as a community and as an educational system. The decision to remove Rosh Hashanah from the school calendar is not just a logistical one. It sends a message to Jewish students that their traditions, their faith, and their values are less important than others. It diminishes the opportunity for Jewish students to feel seen and supported within their schools, and it deprives all students of the chance to learn about the diversity of cultures, histories, and religions that make our society return stronger. The decision to recognize Jewish holidays on the school calendar is a powerful symbol of inclusion and respect. It is not simply a matter of holidays. It is a matter of respect for Jewish community and their right to celebrate their faith alongside their peers. So I ask us all here today, what kind of society do we want to build for our children? Do we want a society where students feel safe, valued, and respected for who they are, regardless of their religion, race, or background? Or do we want a society where we overlook and diminish the struggles and experiences of minority groups? Removing Rosh Hashanah from the school calendar per, sorry, perpetuates the idea that Jewish culture and holidays are secondary. This is not the message we should send. Instead, we should embrace our diversity and strive to create an environment where all cultures, including Jewish culture, are celebrated, respected, and acknowledged. By supporting the recognition of Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, and other important cultural observances, we foster a more inclusive, compassionate, and understanding environment for all students. We show them that we value diversity, that we celebrate it, and that we honor the traditions that make us who we are. Thank you for your time, your understanding, and your commitment to making our schools a place where every student feels seen, heard, and respected. Thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
Hi, hello. My name is Loretta Orlando. I'm a parent. Two totally unrelated things. I would respectfully ask that the policy committee consider tabling Policy 9151. I think it needs a lot of work. I'm not really sure what's going on, if it's an anti-harassment policy or exactly what it is. I do think, you know, it just needs some more work. It has some errors in it. Happy to assist you in any way, but I do ask that you consider tabling that for now. In addition, just one comment about the school calendar, and it's been talked about many times over the year, over the years, even before Mr. Mango was here as a superintendent. But for the past few years, we only get one years at a time of the school calendar. And, you know, many districts produce several years at once. As a matter of fact, Basking Ridge has their school calendar posted up to 2028. And I think that's very important as, you know, for the board to consider, as we're working with the teachers' union right now, that we all get together and try to consider posting more than one school year at a time. I think it would have a real positive impact in the community with the parents, and I think it would really be a satisfier if we could put that up there for our community. You know, I, I'm not here to tell you what days, you know, we need to go to school on or not, but certainly knowing ahead of time what days we're here and we're not here, especially things like the President's Day weekend. We, sometimes it's a four-day, sometimes it's a three-day, you know, knowing any of that stuff as far ahead of time, that the board could work with the union on doing that, I think would be a great help for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Danielle Olson. Oh, is it two?
Just pick it up.
I've never gotten up here before. I don't have anything really prepared, but I just had some things that were on my mind. And sitting here, listening to the presentation, I was struck with some of the, the budget concerns, and I've had some serious concerns about some of the decisions that the board is making in recent years. Like, I, I looked back at the budgets, because the budget seems to be a topic. When this superintendent started, the representation to the public was that we had some kind of budget problem, or that is how it came across. We've never had a budget problem in this district. NJ.com rated us 17th highest in the state for the amount of money per household that we pay in to our school system, which average per household is like $12,000. Now, I know some of us pay quite a bit more than that, and others less. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of money for the amount of students that we have in this district. And I feel that if things are coming up, like, I wasn't even aware that that Stony Brook conversation was happening, but I am aware that at the previous district that the superintendent worked for, there were schools that were closed. Maybe they did have a budget problem. But that is not something that we have here. What we have is a failure in leadership if we don't figure out how to effectively use the money that we have to educate the small amount of students that we do have. My husband's family's lived here for a long time. My in-laws have lived here for about 55 years. My husband was educated through the school system, as was his brother. We have children in the school system. It's always been an excellent school system. It was ranked fourth in the state when he went through. In 2020, it was ranked 35th. It's currently ranked 76th. And when the superintendent got up and talked about the rankings and how he doesn't really want to focus on them, but it is part of a picture, he likened that to kind of the course selection and stuff. But the rankings are much more than that, and they're an indication of the health of your school system. And as they're falling, it's a direct result of some of the decisions that the board of that is making. And I think-
I'm sorry, Danielle. Does this have something to do with the agenda items? Because that's what this is about.
Well, you talked about the, the budget a little bit.
She's allowed to teach her.
Okay, do you want me to wait?
I'm just asking if it has something to do with an agenda item. Excuse me, Jen. I'm just asking if there's something specific to the agenda.
Do you want me to wait? And does everybody want?
Here.
Okay, so I've become increasingly concerned over the years about the quality of education here, and particularly the people that we were hiring-
So your concern is the quality of the education and the rankings?
Yes, and some of the decisions that we're making as a school district that are, that are going to contribute to a lessening of the quality of education here.
And what, what decisions about the budget?
Well, most notably, well, we can talk about the budget, because the budget's gone up. And I did write down, in 2018, 2019, the overall budget was a little over 40 million. Currently, it's 48. I know you said 46, but online I find, I found 48. That's a 20% increase in the amount of money that we're spending. Yet, in the spring, we removed 24.5 positions, saving $2.5 million in teacher salaries. Yet, the budget has continued to go up, right? So if we're taking money out of the staff salaries, we're pushing it somewhere else, right? So we're taking it away from educational resources in teacher salaries, right? I think that's a problem. I think that's a real problem, because we're seeing classroom sizes go up. We're seeing rankings go up, right? The average, I asked, it was like the average student classroom size is 19, but most classrooms are over that. And I think that's hard for kids. I could kind of say a lot about these things, but when the representation is like spending $600,000 on a sound system or something, I think that's like a priority problem, right? And I-
That's not, I didn't say we were gonna spend $600,000.
No, I'm just saying, like, okay, so you're-
We have $63 million of facilities needs, boilers, HVAC. We don't have, our, our buildings' management systems do not maintain heat in a gym, which is causing potentially the floor to warp.
Okay.
If it rains on our kids while they're learning, then they can't learn. It doesn't matter how much I pay the teachers. I have, we have to, as a board, fiscally manage four, five building facilities-
Okay.
-and the roads that, that connect them. We have to, everything that's involved in managing them, feeding, heating, maintaining the safety of the buildings, the SROs, like, from, from the person that cleans the buildings, to the people that keep them safe and running, to the staff, the professional staff and the certified staff-
Sure.
-that keep them, the kids, you know, the education at the level that we want. It's not just one thing. There's multiple aspects of running a district, and you're very focused, which is the key part. And, and we are very focused on making sure the education is top-notch. And I have to be honest, Danielle, I'm really offended, because we just talked about all the things that we're doing, implementing response to intervention, we're doing assessments on a multiple basis. We are trying not to lose programs by being creative, by finding a way to keep those classrooms full. As the population in the high school, where those programs are offered is declining.
Can we talk about that for a second?
We are, we are doing everything we can to maintain that and keep, keep it within a 2% raise.
Okay.
And I'm shocked that what you just sat through, you can't, you didn't hear that.
Yeah, no, I'm getting to that, because what I sat through was a commitment to do certain programs, right? You're talking about making science better. Our science proficiency numbers were awful, right? Like, we all agree with that. They were below the state average, which is really, really terrible, right?
Right, which has been going on for years. That's been going on for years.
Of course.
That didn't just happen in the last two years. That's been going on for a long time.
No.
That, that was, that was a systemic science building process where the curriculum did not support. The spiral process they're talking about is a little bit of knowledge for each one. And what we realized is that that was not building the foundation for our kids to perform at a higher level. When we reassessed the curriculum, they didn't support each other. The math curriculums did not support and grow. So what the, our, our new staff did was they realized that the curriculum wasn't building on the math side, and it wasn't supporting the science. Our kids were not learning the math they needed for the science classes. So we reevaluated that, and we're correcting it. So now your math classes will line up with your science classes.
I know, but part of the realignment was removing certain things, like you remove the pre-calculus. I'm not, I don't want to go over the curriculum, but I do want to say, the most important point that I have is-
Please.
-these programs are great if you're gonna implement them, if you're going to fix science and you're going to fix math, right? And you removed a lot of staff, and maybe you needed to, and maybe you need to shift-
What's defined a lot of staff? How many staff do we-
Well, 24.5 just in April alone. Plus, you-
In two years. And that was admins, secretaries, supervisors. That was not teaching staff.
A lot of teachers have left that haven't been replaced, but let me just get to my biggest point, okay?
No, that's a lot, define a lot. You're saying a lot. That's actually not true.
Well, could you provide us with a list?
Sure. You want a list? Email me, and we'll provide you with a list.
Okay, I'd love to have a list. But the biggest point I have is, you're doing all this educational programming, right? But every single teacher that you have hired, and you have talked about this at board meetings, is a Step 1 teacher. It is the lowest qualified teacher that you can find.
High school?
Okay, well, it is in the board meeting minutes, and I think that is-
70% of our staff is the highest step. 70% of our staff.
Mrs. Olson, I just want to thank you for, for all the, no, no, because you're over your three minutes, number one. Number two, this has nothing to do with anything other than agenda. Number three, thank you for all our staff that we hired over the last two years for basically saying, you're terrible, you shouldn't be here. I have a problem with that. You're talking about my staff.
I did not say that.
Who are you to dictate salary?
I think you're trying to get away from the point.
So, all right.
All right, but, all right, fine. Over the summer, let me just make one final point, since you're negating my point. Over the summer, I went back, and I talked to you about this. I looked at the first nine teachers that were hired with the new superintendent, and the last nine that were hired under the last superintendent, right? Just to understand how much money you were saving by hiring teachers that didn't have a lot of experience, okay? The teacher, the last nine that were hired under the previous superintendent-
How do you know they don't have a lot of experience? Were you at those interviews? You're, you're basing it on a step level, but you weren't at the interviews. You don't know the experience.
I'm trying to say that if, it's like you don't want to hear the, the reality-
You know what?
-of the point I'm trying to make.
No, you and I have had multiple conversations. I've sat with you and tried to explain this to you personally. We spent two hours talking about it. If you want to share this with an email, because we're taking up valuable time of the board, I'm- an email, because we're taking up valuable time on the board, I'm happy to share it with you and explain to you again. You are equating the level of step and the amount of money we have with the quality of teachers. I don't equate that. I equate that with the quality of teacher and the person. You might have someone who had an educational experience or had a work experience that went and got a teaching degree that's going to bring life experiences in and starts at step one. I might have someone who just came out of college who is hungry and eager to be a teacher and is showing amazing qualities that we can now teach them and have them grow into that role. Having all of our teachers at a high step does, is not a very intelligent way of managing your workforce, because then they can all retire at the same time. You have to have your, your workforce through different levels of experience. It gives them different levels of initiative and energy, new ideas. You have people in the middle that mentor and the people that are experienced.
Have you hired anyone, anyone in the last few years that has more than the minimum amount of experience, like more than a step one or step two? Like, who?
That is irrelevant. As an educator, that's actually very insulting.
I just think that when we talked over the summer, you said that you had-
Okay, it's getting, I think we've taken up enough time of everybody's. I'm happy to continue to talk to you about those. And if you would like me, we can email. We'll include it. I mean, if people want the public knowledge and information of how many teachers we've hired, I mean, it's, it's public knowledge. We'll, we'll, we'll write it down. How many, how many teachers left and how many people retired?
If you could keep a list of who's leaving and who's coming in and what their experience level would be.
Well, no one's leaving as of now, unless they retire.
No, I just mean in the past. And then, the only other thing I had was with the budget, if it's possible for you to attach some kind of graphic representation to the budget so people can understand-
Don't we produce that?
How money is being spent and the shifting dynamic of it. It's very difficult to understand.
Well, and you know what? I'm going to agree with you on this. And that's something that I really wanted to do when I got on the board. And we've been really busy with a lot of other stuff, but defining the budget in easier terms is, is something that I, I agree with you. That should be a better way to do.
Yeah, because when you look at it online, you can't, you can really tell how it's shifting.
Yeah, I agree. The language is hard to read and understand. So that's, yeah, that is, thank you for reminding me. That was something I didn't want to do.
All right, thanks.
Can we do a graphic presentation, don't we?
So I wanted to do a counter because when COVID hit, that was a really tough time. It was the first time I started coming to the PTA meetings. Oh, sorry, can you hear me now? Yeah. And what all of you, in my eyes, have done since there, the fighting and where we are now between the curriculum, I'm seeing the changes between tutoring sessions, helping students who are struggling in math, fixing the language arts program. I was just saying to Kim Mazurkowitz, all, all the stuff that we were talking and fighting for and have worked with you on, it's a shame all our kids are leaving, you know? Because I feel like what you have all done has been, it, it's beyond. I think all of you worked really hard, and I'm seeing it. Unfortunately, I think maybe the ratings were down, but maybe that's a result of what was, not what is and what will be. So I just wanted to share that with you. So.
Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. Kathy Fitzgerald. I would just like to repeat what she just said. I am an administrator in a Bergen County School District, and I've met with a couple of you guys over the past years as this new administration is, has come in. And it makes my heart so happy what you just did with the science program at, at PRM. I do wish my son was younger, because he's really missed a lot of these awesome opportunities that you guys are bringing in. My one question about the calendar is, it's just not clear. Have you guys eliminated parent-teacher conferences? They just didn't see it on there.
How you doing, Mrs. Fitzgerald?
Good.
Good to see you. No, that was revised tonight. I'm sorry. The parent-teacher conferences are, yeah, during the teacher convention week.
Oh, okay. Will they be half-days or?
Yes, those are half-days for, for-
Okay, so those still exist?
Oh, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, that was an-
I just didn't see it on the original calendar, that's all.
Are you guys doing something different? How about you?
At the elementaries, we, we only do it at the elementaries, half-days, not the middle school. Yeah, pretty similar.
Okay.
We're starting in August, too.
I'm a happy guy, I watch the kids. I just wanted to say, I don't care about the August start. My kids are here for sports anyway. But the four-half-day thing, the two days after, I get the two days of August, but the two days after Labor Day, I have to go to work on Monday after Labor Day. No one says like, oh, you had a lot, they've been off for all summer. It's time to get back. There's no need, you need to move the professional development to another time? Fine. But the four-half-days, and I understand that you think that there's no learning, when they, they have a mentality, oh, it's a half-day, who cares? It's time to get back. Two-half-days, time to get back to school after Labor Day. That's it. That's my-
Thank you.
Hi, how are you? I just wanted to, I like a lot of the things that I'm hearing. I just, one thing I just wanted to piggyback upon was conferences. I know in the past, we've always done the October conferences. I actually taught in Baskin Ridge in Bernadine's Township for 10-plus years. Now I'm home. But I, one thing that we did implement was October conferences were more of a sharing conference, because it's really, a lot of diagnostics have not been done yet, and a lot of teachers, rightfully so, do not know their students accurately yet. I love that there's a lot of assessments going on between beginning, middle of the year and end of year, and like a lot of work towards these rubrics and making things more streamlined for students. Loving it. I really, this was like one of the things I really wanted for my students, to be able to see kind of where my students were at, even though I kind of really know where they're at personally. But like, it's like, you know, you want, as a parent, everyone wants to feel that security. But we'd love for spring conferences, and maybe a movement even just to abolish, if we're not going to do, you know, both is a lot for teachers and to ask for that, but maybe abolishing October, moving it to spring, or both is a lot. So like, I get it if that's too much for the teachers, but the spring, I think, would be more effective, maybe in sharing assessment tools that they've been working so hard to implement and assess their students.
Go ahead, Mrs. Thomas.
One more thing. I also wanted to just quickly say, I don't, I know it's not on today's agenda, but tonight I was really here for, to hear more about like the five-to-seven and the eight-to-12, different rumors going on and, and building movements and how and why and why there's, you know? But I know that wasn't for here today, but looking forward to hearing more.
I actually did touch on it in CAC instead. How about?
I know. I was supposed to be there on the committee.
No, that's okay. Call me, you want to call the office tomorrow? I'll go over everything with you. I'll give it all to you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
But Mrs. Thomas has something for you about the conferences.
So thank you for bringing that up about conferences. We're actually on the same page with you, and we've been discussing with our teachers at the elementary level, Mrs. Utel and Mrs. Olawale have done a lot of work. So they created committees in both buildings because we all collectively felt that the fall conferences come way too soon. We're just getting the kids in. We're doing a lot of work with the kids, getting diagnostics, and it's, it's very soon in the year. So they've been discussing with their committees about the possibility of pushing the conferences back so that it gives us more time, we have much more information to provide, align it closer to the report card. And we feel that those would be more beneficial conversations. So I know they've discussed potential December, potential January dates. I agree with you. I was always accustomed to a spring conference as well, so that's why this all came about as well. And we figured maybe if we push that fall conference back to the winter after the holidays, we thought maybe that would be a great time of the year to come in and meet with parents and have meaningful conversations. So we haven't determined quite, right? We're still in the process. We haven't determined quite yet when exactly it would be, but that will be reflected on the calendar.
I'll make this very quick. I also wanted to share with you that the reputation of the Kinnon School System is spreading. People are hearing about it. I know for a fact, families from Glen Rock that have moved here because of what this board has done. So I also wanted to share with you that and other people have come to me when I've mentioned that I live in Kinnon. The reputation is, is good, is a good one. And thank you to all of you. So.
Hi, Cheryl Galino. I have students at Keel and Stony Brook. My question is about the calendar. I don't care if we start in August, whatever, great. The half-days are really challenging as working parents. And my question is, have any other ideas been discussed in regard to the staff development so that it's not always a half-day? You know, we have the delayed openings also. Very challenging for working parents. I am an educator myself. I understand and appreciate the importance of staff development, but have there ever been any other considerations so that it's not always such a difficult task for working parents to accommodate?
That's a great question. We've discussed it. We've kind of gone back and forth with it. And because of our open lines of communication with the association and Mrs. Suffin and company, that's something we're always looking to do. We know that we're a little bit handcuffed with the way things fall, even on the Columbus Day holiday, where our students are in for a half-day. And I'm accustomed to that day, school's off for students, but staff is in for a full day of professional development, along with Dr. King. And then in August, so you're kind of gaining all that right then and there. So that's something we could continue to work towards and on. But I, I don't, like I kind of said in my presentation, I don't disagree with what Mrs. Freddie's saying, as you take a step back and you look at it, those first two days in September, that was just how we always operated. We just wanted to get folks in in August, if that was agreeable. But then in the future, those half-days would move over. Could move them for the one year, like I said, we could move them to different dates. Heard a lot from the community on the calendar about the February break, so we, we brought back that Friday because, especially in winters like this, where I know the board president loves winter and I may not, I've had enough of it, but folks have had enough. They want to leave. So I, I understand that, too. But the professional development is something that we'll always work on.
Right. And then, same token with conferences, has there ever been any discussion about, you know, even two half-days where it's, you know, afternoon and evening conferences so that it's not just three half-days in a row?
That's not a bad idea. That we have. And we've, in a prior district where Mrs. Thomas and I were, there were conferences in the fall and the spring. We were accustomed to that. But that's, that's, everything is always open to-
Okay. That was just my question. Has it ever been considered? And I truly appreciate, you know, taking the time to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Molly Stramberg. This is my first time at a meeting.
That's okay. Welcome.
First, let me say that I appreciate how hard your job is. And I can see that you all put a lot of work into what you do, into making this community great and the schools great for our kids. But I have to say, when I saw the calendar, I was quite upset. I just find it personally insulting that it seems to be acceptable to have school on the first day of Rosh Hashanah, when traditionally it's been a day off. I just kind of asked, like, what kind of message is this sending to our children? Are we no longer a community that values all religions or some more than others? The Board of Ed is really, the message it's sending, at least in my opinion, is that, that the holidays, the Jewish holidays are expendable. And yet, Good Friday and Christmas are not. We, you know, have those holidays off. How do I explain that to my Jewish child? That, you know, these Christian holidays are, you're not going to have school, but the Jewish holidays traditionally that have been off are, we don't need it off this year. To me, that's hard to explain to a child, and I shouldn't really have to. I just would hope that the Board of Ed would set an example for our community that we value every religion. And to see that, if Rosh Hashanah never was off, if we always had school on Rosh Hashanah, fine. Okay, I can see that. It's, I understand it's not a majority of, of the students that we, you know, that you have. But to then, but the fact that it was off this year and then next year, oh, well, we need to make up the day and that's where we're going to take it from? Just as, as somebody who feels strongly about her religion, I, it really hits at my core. And I would hope that you guys would reconsider so that we can send a positive message to our students.
Can I just give you a little bit of a response?
Sure, I'd love to.
And I, and I totally understand what you, what you're saying. So when I went back in the history, when we were developing the calendar and going back and forth, what I found, and again, I was not here, so I don't know what the, the thoughts were or not. In the 1112 year, the district was closed for Rosh Hashanah, not Yom Kippur. 1213, it was closed, it was open on Rosh Hashanah, but closed Yom Kippur. Then that switched up in 1314. Then in, from 1415, 1516, 1616, 17, Yom Kippur, we were closed, but Rosh Hashanah was not. And again, I don't have any frame of reference other than the calendar that I was given. In 1718, both days of Rosh Hashanah were observed, but Yom Kippur was not. 1819 and 1920, there was a day for each. In 2021, Rosh Hashanah was not, and it was Yom Kippur observed. In 2122 and 2223, it was both. I didn't have anything to do with any of those calendars. I did have 2324 where it was Yom Kippur, Rosh Hashanah was, I believe, on the weekend. And 2425 was, it was Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, I believe, was on the weekend. So when we were putting it together, and I went through the history of almost 15 years, trust me, it's not to offend anybody. I'm not that kind of person.
I don't get that impression.
But I just, if we're putting it together and we're looking at dates and how do we best manage that, and that's where we came. I, I understand if that's not popular. I also understand, depending on the board votes, that for our staff, they have the right to take personal days on those days or day or what have you. And for our students, obviously that's a religious observance and they can take off, depending. But that, I just wanted to say, it wasn't just a, a quick thought. I went through the history of it before I got there. Not saying, I'm not expecting you to agree or not disagree, but it wasn't like I just systematically said, well, let's just do, it's not me.
I, I didn't get that impression, but I would just hope that the board would reconsider, just looking at maybe another place where we can fit that day in or come up with another creative solution. I mean, even if it, you know, we have Good Friday off and then the following entire next week for spring break, I mean, maybe we cut the spring break short. I don't know what the solution is, but I do, would hope that the board would send the message that it's equally as important as other holidays like Good Friday. Because like I, like I said, like, I want to be able to say to my Jewish child, like, we, everybody has this day off. You're not the only one missing school because this is a really important holiday, and that the members of our community respect that as well, just like you have Christmas off, just like the Good Friday's off. So, thank you for, for listening.
Can I just piggyback on what you just said? In response to all those years, have you also now looked at how the Jewish population has grown within Kinnon? Because I know since I've moved here in 2014, there has been significant growth within the amount of Jewish students within this town. So I think to just go, say historically, we looked at this day, that, this, this, this. That's not really accurate to what's current, the current environment is.
All I'm trying to say is that nothing was done purposely, so it's not, that's not this.
And then, you also mentioned that there has been some revisions to the calendar. Are they, can we be shared? Because currently, the day that you have on Yom Kippur for the calendar that was shown to the community is the wrong day.
You're talking about the second. That was the revision, that it was the second that it starts.
But that was not, I haven't seen that published, though. If that's what you're voting on, that's what I'm trying to ask. I haven't seen that. What I saw had the first.
You're not letting me speak. I want to answer you.
Okay.
It was revised, the first, it's observed at night.
Yes, I know I'm Jewish.
So then we went to the second. Yeah, no, okay, that's fine. So we revised it to the second.
Okay, but I'm asking the calendar that you're voting on. That's all I'm asking about.
Oh, yes.
I don't have access to that. What I saw had the first, is what I'm asking about.
But it is on-
And that was not shown in your presentation tonight, that date. So.
Okay. I understand, Mrs. Cota.
That's not my name. But thank you for calling me the wrong name.
Yeah, we, we-
That's who you were.
We caught a couple of that mistake and the-
Yeah, I mean, it just kind of goes to the whole due diligence of decision-making, too, where you have the wrong day of a major holiday, and that was sent out to the community before it was even like noticed. And it kind of goes to show the importance of that Jewish holiday, that it really was not taken very seriously if that was even, the date was wrong on the calendar that was sent out to the community.
Well, thank you for bringing our awareness to that. I appreciate it.
Okay, don't laugh at me. I have a, kind of a minor issue, but I just wanted to bring it up, see if it was an issue. And I know some of you on the board have the same issue I do. So I live up mountain, and I deal with snow- So I live up mountain, and I deal with snow routes. And I know that this doesn't really affect a lot of people in the community. And for the most part, when it happens in the mornings, it's not that big of a deal. My child is never on time. I drive her every day. But in the afternoons, when she doesn't have sports, and there's an announcement that there's snow routes, my husband and I do not live anywhere near the, we don't work anywhere near the school. And a couple of times, it's been a big issue, to try to figure out how to get my child home, because the bus will not take her home. And I know that it is acceptable for some kids to walk up mountain and go to their house. I just don't advocate for that in a snowstorm, and so I don't know if there's a solution, because everything, every time it's always told me the buses can't go up mountain. I'm just bringing it up, because it's not often discussed, and it affects a very small amount of people. But this year, I think, once it was called, and I was like in a panic on how to get home. And the issue is, I'm driving home in a snowstorm, she's stuck at a school in the snowstorm. Like, it just becomes a bit of an issue. I don't know if there's a solution, but I thought I'd just bring it up.
Well, I think you have a great point. We could definitely look into it. If you, if you don't mind tomorrow, if you could just want to follow up, send me an email. And we could always, always look.
Okay. It's a small amount of people, but.
I understand that, but that's also, as a parent, that's not easy.
I have one other thing to bring up, and this is, again, a small issue. My child's cell phone is never charged, and so for after-school sports, the school is usually blocked, and so they can't get to the office if they have to make phone calls. Normally, she has a friend she can borrow a phone from, but I was just wondering, from a safety and communications aspect, if there was like a phone in the gym, or somewhere near the field, that the kids could have access to in a safe way, so they could contact parents, because we're relying on their cellphones, and they're not always charged.
You mean after-school?
Yeah, yeah. In school, during school, it's amazing. They, they're in the office all the time using the phone. I'm talking about after-school. So after-school practices, when they get dropped off from a track bus, get dropped off, when practice ends on the field.
So you're looking for chargers, like availability?
No, well, maybe just.
It's the gate that's right by the gym that's blocking.
A hard-line phone, old school.
Like a hard-line phone for the kids to have access to.
Because that gate's.
Most of the, again, these are very small issues, and they affect mostly high school kids, but that gate is locked, so during the school day, it's not an issue at all.
Sure.
But after-school, like practices on the field, if for any reason they're left, and all their friends leave, and their cell phone doesn't have a charge, there isn't a landline for them to access a parent.
Okay.
And the cell phone service is much better, but it's just an idea.
Good point.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kate Simner, and I have a kindergartner. I want to say that I am very excited for the programs that I see coming down the road, that he will eventually be able to have. I will say that I do not like the proposed calendar. I would like to propose that the vote be tabled for now. I'm not the only one that's had concerns about it. We've had the half-days, we've had the Rosh Hashanah concerns. I have some concerns about the responses I got regarding my, the things that I brought up. I was told the calendar had been discussed with the CAC. And then earlier at the CAC, we decided that didn't really happen.
That was my mistake.
So.
Confusing it with another meeting and committee, so my apologies.
I have brought it up at public meetings since I've been on the board. I've, I've mentioned it every time we've brought up the, the calendar. I, I know a lot of people don't come to the public meetings, but I have talked about starting before Labor Day for the last four years. I, I don't, again, I, every meeting.
I plan on coming from here on out, for what that's worth.
But I, I have talked about it at meetings. I, I thought we did bring it up at Citizens Advisory, but again, maybe it was public meeting, or it might not have been. But I, I did think we talked about it.
The temperature is, and HVAC system is one of the arguments, except that we would be starting school even earlier than when you said you had the issues earlier this year, when school first started. So I don't see how that will help.
I'm not a meteorologist, but I know.
Nobody knows. They're wrong anyway.
But, and they get away with it. They still get paid. In August, and even late April, you'd be shocked, like last year, as I shared during the presentation, there was times where my office is receiving phone calls, hey, the heat index, and we're pivoting throughout the day, April, May, right into June. So my thought is, that's the least of it compared to the instructional piece. So I, I, that's why I made that, that point, but yes, HVAC is always an issue.
Getting to the instructional piece.
Hence, hence the half-days, early, just like that.
Getting to the instructional piece, I don't see how those two days are going to make that big a difference in our, our testing. I would love to see how the syllabus carries through, and how those two days before require the students starting almost one full week early. Because between the two days and then the long weekend, that's almost a full week over when they would normally start.
So the intent was to start earlier, so that we could give more time off in the middle of the winter, when the kids have longer periods of, without breaks. And the only way to do that is either to extend the school year in June, which a lot of people don't want to do, because camps actually do start in June. And that normally, I don't know of any camp that is the last week of August. I could be wrong, but most camps are, actually start in mid-June, and they're over by the end of August, because a lot of districts, in fact, I have to say, having lived in five different states, and gone to five different school districts, this is one of the only places I know that still starts school after Labor Day. Almost every place else starts before. So from a camp perspective, it, it actually is beneficial to have, be done earlier in June, so you can do that. That said, I understand that people, you know, made plans, and that our, our communication with the major change could have been better. And that is definitely a lesson that I'm taking away, is that there are times where we talk a lot about things as board members, and we think we talk about it publicly, and we don't. And it is so much in our mind, because we work so extensively, that we forget that maybe we didn't communicate. And in this instance, we didn't do a good job with that, and that's a lesson that I'm taking away. And I'm going to make sure that in the future, when we have major changes that affect people's schedules, or just in, in other aspects, that we make sure that we embrace the community. We've done that with the cellphones. We've been doing that with some of the stuff in Citizens Advisory. And we, I, I will take the hit as the board president. I dropped the ball on this one, and I just didn't think about the impact with the lack of communication. So that is something that we should have done a better job with. That said, the work that's gone into it, and what we perceive as a benefit to the students, and the majority of the parents that I've heard back actually like it, where in the, we like the schedule better for our students and for the, for the upcoming school year. But I understand that we didn't do a good job communicating it.
I also just want to go on the record as saying, again, to the absenteeism, I understand that it's our decision whether or not we send our children those days, but you're not going to get them assessed if they're not there on those days. That's not going to benefit them for those two days.
Okay, thank you. I understand.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close comments after, okay. I'm going to close comments after, Ms. Pro.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to say, back to the instructional piece for a second. If there's two things I know about teaching, it's that change is hard, and no one likes to admit when they're wrong. And I think that over the last, I'm going to say, five or six years, especially after COVID, everybody has adapted really well to changes here in Kinnalan, and everyone has taken ownership over, like, things maybe weren't so great, and this is what we're doing to work on it. Because it's really hard to turn around and say, you know, like, oh, maybe this wasn't the best instructional approach, or maybe we're doing these assessments differently. And it's hard for people who aren't in education, I think sometimes, to like, appreciate that that's hard for a whole, you know, population of people to come together and say, okay, we're reflective on this, and we want to be better, and this is what we're working towards. And I, I do think that the administration and the staff here have done that, so I think that's a positive.
Thank you, Ms. Pro. Okay, we're going to close comments now, and go on to agenda items. I'd like a motion for a block vote, roll call on a block vote for agenda items A, B, C, and D. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, okay, discussion. We have, we have a couple of things to approve, so, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. You know, we, I've, I've listened, we've all listened to presentations from the public. Is, and, and Mr. Bang, I appreciate during your presentation, you said, hey, you know, we can find other, other times for the professional development. Is that going to throw a huge monkey wrench? Like, if we, if we as a board talk right now, and, and we say, you know, maybe not do the two half-days in September, and put the professional development later?
I don't think so.
Can I ask a question about the four-day November teachers convention weekend?
Sure.
Is that a requirement by the state of New Jersey? Because I know my school is not a public school, but does not partake in four-day, because Thanksgiving is also in November. Is that required?
For the publics, it is.
It is, that we get four, okay, thank you.
I think it's some, something that would, we'd have to bring up with the union to negotiate. It's not even something we could, yeah, entertain right now. Anybody have any other comments? Does anybody, Jen?
Regarding policy 9151, I don't know if, I wasn't, I didn't, I wasn't able to listen in at Citizens Advisory Committee. Excuse me, was there an explanation? For policy 9151, was there a discussion or an explanation on, like, the concerns or the, the things with it?
Yeah, so.
I'm wondering whether we should table it, and, and go ahead and take a look at it?
Yeah, so Ms. Orlando, Ms. Orlando brought up that it's not very well-written, and that it kind of only talked about verbal interactions, and there could also be email ones. So she did bring up some pretty good points about that. And does, but going back to the calendar, because this is kind of a big issue. Does anybody have any other discussion points on the calendar? Frank?
Yeah, just from my knowledge, do we?
I can't hear you.
Just from my knowledge, John brought up about kind of changing the half-days. And there were some public comments about other days that people wanted to see off. Is that a public discussion between us now? Or is that something that we kind of table and reevaluate? Or is there an urgency around the calendar that we need to be aware of?
Well, I think you have two things in play. You have the sidebar, which we've worked real hard with our association, so I would be, I would not recommend tabling it with the sense of August with the start date. I think for the two half-days, to Mrs. Freddi's point and a few others' point, I completely understand that. So I do have some alternatives to that. And like I said, if, if this is what we're doing going forward, which I would assume, to get the August start date, then those half-days would be in August anyway, backed up. But this year, because it was the first time that's what we were doing, to, to add in, as some of our community members brought up Rosh Hashanah, then that would mean we'd have to lose something somewhere else, and I think either that's a decision at a later time, or dependable, because that could impact us one way or the other, whether it's taking it away from a vacation that's currently on there, or extending the year for the one day past the weekend. So I think those are, I think we have three separate things in play. I would recommend that we pass it majorly because of the sidebar, and I work with the union in good faith, number one. Number two, I could easily revise with those two dates right here and now, and we could vote on it as revised. And then if the board wanted to have discussions about the Rosh Hashanah discussion, no, I'm always open to that. It's just, we're going to have to figure out where we want to take it, and you could revise it at a later date.
Thank you for the.
So you just let me know which way you want to go.
Yeah, so we could, we could revise the schedule. We do that, I mean, even if we don't use the snow days, we revise the schedule and add it to. So anytime we revise the schedule, we just vote on the revision. So that's something we could do.
That's very helpful, and I think Dave, you did a nice, that's very helpful, and I think Dave, you did a nice job breaking it down to the three items that we were still discussing. I was more asking the question on the third item, which you brought up, because there was a lot of passionate feedback.
Gotcha. Yeah, no, absolutely. If you, if you want, I could, I could.
Okay, well, what we can do is, this would be my suggestion with the calendar, let's approve it as-is. And then we can talk about, with the union, about the, the half-days, and revise those based on that continued negotiation with the staff, because that's something we previously agreed upon. And then I think what we try to do is really work to try to find a way to observe Rosh Hashanah. Either we take from Good Friday, or we look at some other, we don't have a four-day weekend for President's Day. So we'll have to get it somewhere.
Wait a second.
What?
I'm thinking out loud. So one might be a curveball, Mrs. Soffin. Here's, here's just, not saying anybody has to act on it, it's up to you, right? So if, if anybody has a tomato, please don't throw it. The two half-days in September, I believe, and I don't have my glasses, I apologize. I believe that's a second and third. We could make them full days, but then we have to give them back somewhere else. So what might be a way to do that is, instead of having the day off on Friday, is that the 13th?
That's a half-day, the 13th, yeah.
No, in, in February?
Oh, February.
That's Friday the 13th that year, backing up to President's Week, and originally, we, we recognized that. You could, we could make them one of the two. So it'd be a half-day before the holiday weekend, and the staff has their PD, and it's kind of leads into the three-day weekend. That would be one. And then the other one would be on the day, what I always called Holy Thursday, which I always recognized myself, as a half-day for staff, for students, and a PD day for staff going into Good Friday and the, and the holiday. And then where Rosh Hashanah falls, we're, we, um, no, wait, I screwed that up, sorry. No, keep Yom Kippur there. So we have that half-day. We can add the other half-day somewhere. We'd have to lose the Friday, yes, we'd have to lose the Friday in February to give back to Rosh Hashanah. So that's a one-for-one. But then the two half-days, the one would be on the, on, right before Good Friday, and then we'd have to find a spot for the other. What did we say? I was thinking out loud, but then I.
You're doing two in one.
Yeah, I can't. I just, I just cross them up, yeah. Yep. I would still have to give back the Friday, yeah. You know what?
Okay, there's, we're going to think, we're going to, we're going to pass it as-is, and we're going to, we're going to solve the problem. But we got to move on. So we are, we're aware of it, we're going to figure it out, we're going to amend it. But we're going to pass it right now, since we, we have the side, we have the sidebar agreement, so we've done a lot of work. We're going to approve the, a calendar as, as is. And then we're going to, we're going to amend the calendar at a later date. So people have it, it's going to be on there, so you know it, and we'll try, we're going to work this month, and we'll update it. That way, we can approve the sidebar.
Yep, so the sidebar.
And get that done, and then we'll reevaluate those two half-days and Rosh Hashanah. We maybe just do one, maybe we do one half-day on the second, and then a full day. There's options. And you could come to Citizens Advisory Committee and help us figure it out, if you want.
Can I ask a point of order?
What's that?
What's the actual date observed for Rosh Hashanah, just so we are all on the same page? Okay. Will we have, I mean, yeah, we'll confirm it, okay.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, so anybody have anything else on the agenda? To talk about any other discussion items, or things they want to? Delete Open F for Super Bowl? How about a day off after Halloween? No, just kidding. Okay, all right, so I would like to, I do agree with Ms. Orlando on 9151. So I would like. So I would like to.
Table that out?
Yeah, what?
So you just want to table 9151?
Yeah, postpone the vote on that one. So I'm going to make a motion to postpone the vote on policy 9151. Okay?
Second.
Second, that motion, all in favor, Kelly and Dana, about postponing the vote on policy 9151? In favor? Okay. So we're, we're gonna postpone that and, and send that back to committee? All right, and now, back to the original motion for the other, all other agenda items. Does anybody have any other discussion?
Just to the point of, you know, insanity, we're approving the calendar as-is with the intention and understanding that we're going to come back next month or whatever to fix the.
Which will be recorded in the minutes.
Okay.
So that'll be public, officially publicized and recorded. Okay, any other discussions on agenda items? None? Okay. Ms. Francisco, can you pull, pull the board on agenda items A through D?
Okay, Mrs. Leonard? Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Perella?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Ms. Portman?
Yes.
Mr. Eisenbenger?
Yes.
Mrs. Donaldson?
Yes. All right, that was fun. Okay, unfinished business? All right, we're, our next item is new business. So we are going to take a recess because the board is gonna do its ethics training and I really promise you, you don't, you're welcome to stay for that, but. Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I, I just.
Yeah.
I didn't get up before because it wasn't business, you know?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Just trying to wait my turn. In the state of New Jersey, there is no secret that there's a teacher shortage and a sub-s shortage. And I just wanted to thank the board and our administration for hiring fantastic new staff. I don't care what step they are on, that has no meaning. Our colleges and universities are preparing top-notch students. I don't care about their experience. I work alongside every single one of them. They're fantastic and you guys do a great job of finding anyone that we can bring to kindle on and add so much more to our programs. On behalf of the association, I needed to say that for our staff. Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna go to recess, you guys. You could stay if you want. Charlene, we're ready for you.
Thank you for coming. Charlene needs to go. You can sit there, please. No. The only one who had to turn up the first night. Frank, Charlene.
All right, I'll hang with you.
Yep.
Do you want us to go to exec?
Sorry.
Okay. So as we look at it, that standard kind of essentially saying that we should think of ethics not as something kind of punitive or not something that, you know, is held against us, but really a way for us to carry out our role and a way to be responsible to the public. And so that's really the way that we should look at is a way to guide our conduct. And, you know, one of the things the School Ethics Commission said is that that should be the minimum of the standards that we expect of ourselves and to hold ourselves to even a higher level than that. So the School Ethics Act goes through four pieces, so two of them just apply to board members only, the Code of Ethics and the mandatory training. And then the other two also include some administrators, the prohibited acts and the disclosure statements. So first, you know, kind of wanted to start at who's the body that oversees the act, and it's the School Ethics Commission. So they are a nine-member board, kind of similar to a board is, that is appointed by the governor for a three-year term. But it's two board members, two administrators, and then the majority, five, are non-school officials. And one of the things we found in this past year is that both of the board seats are vacant and one of the administrator's seats is vacant. So there have only been six people on the School Ethics Commission this whole year, and five of them are non-school officials. So kind of, you know, and we'll see in a little bit here kind of how that has made a difference. So, you know, we talked about the disclosure statements and, you know, so we know that a new school official that just gets sworn in has thirty days. Anyone else returning has till April thirtieth, and I know I just had to fill mine out for New Jersey School Board, so I'm sure you guys probably just got yours too as well, right? And just recognizing that those are public records on the, you know, on the School Ethics Commission site so that anyone can view them. So mandatory training, just kind of wanted to highlight some of the things that are changed. And we know that as board members, we are the most highly trained public officials in the state. I think we're the only ones that have mandatory training. So, you know, last year the change went into effect that the importance of new board members getting training early. So rather than having a whole year to complete their training, now have to do it within the first ninety days of board service. So again, just that value in getting that training as soon as possible. You know, there's just kind of been more and more evidence that, like, there was a study that said most board members feel like it takes them two years to get up to speed in this role. And when you see all the things that you have to accomplish, so saying what can we do to help shorten that learning curve? And so one of those things is to make sure that we're trying to give board members as much training as possible, as early as possible. So the other thing that happened too is that, just starting in September, we added policy to Governance Two, so for your second year of board service. Policy was never part of mandatory training, and we were just finding that there were so many issues and questions about it that thought it was valuable to add that into mandatory training. Then the Labor Relations piece used to be part of Governance Two, and now it is part of Governance Three. And then we revamped the student achievement part of the program. And it's really now focused on a study that is actually now twenty years old from the Iowa Lighthouse Study, but it looked at high-performing districts and compared them to low-performing districts and how the board, if there was any difference in the way that the board performed its roles, and said that there were marked differences. And so one of them, just kind of the biggest highlight is starting the fact that the board has to accept, like, no excuses, right? When it comes to student achievement and saying that that has to be the foundation of the work that we do. And from the board's perspective, we have to make it clear that we have high expectations for our students. And then that high expectation should, you know, continue to be evident to the rest of the district. And then the last piece of it is Governance Four, which is legal updates, so that is every year following your reelection. And it's something that is always different. So if you're on the board twenty years, you will have to take it multiple times and, like I said, make sure that it's different each time. So as we look at the work of the School Ethics Commission, part of what they can do is issue an advisory opinion. And what that means is that only you as a school official, if you're not sure if something would be a violation and the conduct has not happened yet, you can ask them for their advice or their opinion on it, and then, but it has to be for future conduct. So, you know, an example of that, there was a board that had a high school senior elected to their board. So here he is still in high school, and so before the person, you know, got sworn in, the rest of the board was like, well, what happens if we're going to talk about his friends or his teachers or one of the classes that he's in? And so asked for an advisory opinion with kind of all of those different scenarios. And the School Ethics Commission essentially came back and said, you know, we're not going to treat this student any different than how we would treat you, right? But this is where the six members comes into effect because if the School Ethics Commission feels that it would be of value to the rest of us to learn from that advisory opinion, they can vote to make it public and take out all of the identifying information. So we went the entire 2024 until about mid-December with zero advisory opinions being released for the year. And then all of a sudden in December, there was about twelve of them that got released all at once. So we are guessing that that was the one and only meeting all year, that all six of those people were there, right? And then voted to release those advisory opinions, so. So these are them, and I'm not going to go through all of them. I'll make sure that you get the presentation, and these are live links, so that you can click on any of the links. I'm just going to highlight a couple of them. So the first one is the second one up there. We're talked about being able to participate in negotiations if their aunt was employed in the district who's not a member of the local union. So the guidance in the past always had to be that your relative had to be in a same or similar statewide union. So this is the first time saying, you know what, we can go beyond that because one of the things we're seeing is that people who are not in the union still benefit from what the union negotiates on behalf of its members. So that the salary and benefits and things that people are getting who are not in the union in a school district benefit from what the union does. So saying that now we're going to say then that that same conflict could apply and that you now might not be able to participate in negotiations because they're indirectly getting a benefit. And then just kind of wanted to look at the last one on the bottom there, and it was about, two board members actually opened up an ice cream store in town. And they were getting requests from like the PTO to have like a special fundraising day in their store. And so they said, okay, like, would this be okay? And the School Ethics Commission essentially came back and said, no, that it could benefit the business financially. You're getting free advertising, you're getting people coming in the store. But said if there was a situation, like, if, say, like the play bill, like, for a play and at the end where they solicit advertisements, if you were asking every single business in town had the same exact opportunity to take out an ad, then that would be okay. It just would only be something that would, you know, just specifically benefit your store. And then they also asked, and what if we wanted to hire some of the students? And then said that, you know, you could do that, you couldn't give them any special benefits, and you would have to recuse yourself as a board member if there were any issues related to those students that came before the board. Then just, you know, so the second piece of, in addition to advisory opinions, the School Ethics Commission can also rule on complaints. So while only a school official can ask for an advisory opinion, anyone who believes that, you know, there was an ethical violation can file ethics charges. The only group really that cannot is the Kinnon Board. So Kinnon Board members could, but not the board as a body. And so the, kind of the guidance that the School Ethics Commission considers is kind of not what do you think, not what do I think, but what, how would a reasonable person, the public, kind of view this situation? And then that's kind of the lens that they would be looking through. So if a violation is found, they make a recommendation to the commissioner. There's four different levels. The least restrictive is a reprimand, which is just kind of a verbal hand slap of, yep, you know, that's wrong, don't do that again. A censure is more formal. It's a resolution that's read at the state level, it's read at your board meeting. And all of those places in your Open Public Meetings Act notice that you say that you are posting your board notices, that resolution would also have to be posted there as well. You can be suspended for, it's usually in thirty-day increments, or removed from the board. So sometimes, you know, it's seemingly difficult to remove someone from the board, but if you don't do your mandatory training or you don't fill out your disclosure statements, those are usually the, you know, were kind of the main reasons that people are removed from the board, so. So these are then the Code of Ethics that, like I said, apply to board members only. So just kind of wanted to explain the difference. So like, the top is the tenant, and then the bottom is the standards that the School Ethics Commission considers. So if someone said, say, that Charlene violated tenant A, they would have to provide evidence, and the School Ethics Commission would compare that evidence to the standard. And that's how then they would make the determination. And a lot of times, most cases get dismissed, and it's perhaps not that the person maybe didn't do something wrong, but whoever filed the charges didn't provide evidence that aligned to the standards that they were looking for. So kind of essentially saying that, you know, you can't just say, oh, well, so-and-so did something unethical, but saying that we are held to professional standards, and this helps identify it. So this first one just kind of identifies the fact that we're kind of the state's boots on the ground, and we have to uphold all their laws, rules, and regulations. Before COVID, we had a really hard time coming up with examples. And then as the mask mandates and other things started coming down, the board members were held accountable to implementing despite, you know, challenges from the public. This is what held you accountable to having to do that, so. Whoops, just go back to the next one, sorry. So the letter B just essentially looks at the lens through which you have to make decisions. So, I mean, you heard people come to the microphone today and would look at things through either like a particular situation, a grade or whatever, and you have to take a step back and say, I appreciate what you're saying, but on this side of the board table, the lens that I have to look through is how does this impact every single student in the Kinnon School District? Because that's who I'm responsible for, so when I make decisions, that's the lens I'm looking at. Next one starts defining our role as a board members and saying, okay, board, this is your lane. Your lane's policymaking, planning, and appraisal. And then kind of importantly, you know, you guys lived this out today and saying that, you know, we have to consult those who might be affected by them. So that's essentially why we have two readings in a policy. First one puts it out there, and then the second reading gives anyone the opportunity to come back and say, hey, board, just so you know, this is how this impacts me. So then you now have the opportunity to do similar to what you did tonight and refer it back to committee and consider it again. This next one talks about us carrying out our roles. You know, this is kind of New Jersey School Board's mantra, saying we don't run the schools, we just make sure they're well-run. How do we do that? Through policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and importantly, that it's together with my fellow board members. Next one talks about making sure that we recognize that as individuals, that we don't have any authority, we can't make any promises because the authority rests with not me as an individual, the authority rests with the board as a whole. We're responsible for the integrity of the board, and we, you know, can't do anything that could compromise the board. This next one talks about, you know, not using the schools for any, you know, political groups, for any personal gain. And to me, this goes back to all students again, that's saying regardless why you got on the board, if you had any platforms when you were running that you promised things to, saying now that you're here, now that you're on this side of the board table, it's the students that are what are, you know, the basis of your decisions. This one talks about the importance of confidentiality. So we know that we're a public body, we do our work in public, but the state has identified nine different reasons that we can go into executive session. And, you know, we need to recognize that that is to protect the rights of students, protect the rights of staff, protect the legal rights of the district. But we also have to understand the importance of that information that we have. You know, there was a case a couple of years ago where a board member, just kind of sitting around the dinner table, shared with his family something about a student. Turned out someone went, one of the family members went on social media and posted something about that student that ended up being very hurtful and harmful to them. So sometimes you don't really realize the impact of the information that you have, and that's why you really have to be mindful of keeping it confidential. The other piece it says here is that we have to make sure that we only provide accurate information, we're held accountable to that. And the School Ethics Commission said, you know what, the public sees how much information you get. So it would be reasonable to them that if a board member said something about the school district, that it must be true based on the information that you have. So that's why you're held accountable then to that accurate information. Next one talks about making sure from the board's perspective, clarifying the fact that we don't hire and we don't fire, but we approve and we disapprove the recommendations of the superintendent. And this one talking about, you know, the importance of supporting and protecting school personnel and their proper performance of their duties. And this is becoming more of an issue with social media and making sure that we recognize that it's not only when we're sitting here at the board table that we need to be, you know, protecting our staff, but also on social media, when you're on the ball fields, just anywhere, that this is a responsibility that we're held accountable to all the time. I mean, a few years ago, there was a case with a board member who had a blog, and for whatever reason, one of the teachers was his favorite subject to bash and said, I don't know why we ever gave this person tenure, and talked about the salary. And, you know, finally, the teacher had had enough and filed ethics charges, but just kind of recognizing that responsibility that we have. And then this last one talks about the fact that from the board perspective, that we are the court of last resort, that we can't act on complaints until failure of an administrative solution. So recognizing that as much as, you know, we saw a lot of people come to the board meetings tonight, and some of it was about things that, you know, that the board is voting on, but sometimes people will come to the board meeting and they haven't gone through the chain of command, right? So this is just kind of helping make it clear that we can't take action until those steps have been followed. You know, earlier this year, I was at a meeting and the board was in executive session for a HIBB. I'm sitting out in the audience, or sitting outside, and there was, I don't know, probably about ten parents, and they were all there, turned out from one grade, and they had an issue, and we're sitting there and sitting there, and so finally that we started talking. And I'm like, well, did you talk to the teacher yet? No. Did you talk to the principal yet? No. And I'm like, okay, well, you know, the board can't do anything to help you about it. And they're like, why didn't we talk to you an hour ago, right? Because, you know, because of the time we spent, but just kind of, we need to help, you know, the people who have an issue understand the best way to get the help that they need. And so it's not a lot of times coming to us because this is what holds us accountable for not being able to do that until they have gone through the steps. So these are then some of the cases related to the Code of Ethics. So again, I'm not going to go through all of those, but so the letter of the alphabet in parentheses there, so that's the letter, like, the tenant that was violated, like. So just kind of wanted to, let's go to the next one, and I'll just go through one of the cases. Let's go one more. Okay, so here, because this one, because there's so many things wrong in this one, right? So like, here's a situation where there was somebody who'd been on the board for over fifteen years. The superintendent had made the board aware that there was a disciplinary issue about this staff member. And so a board member was friends with this staff member and went to the staff member's house to pick up, like, a letter, because I guess that the staff member was ill, that wanted to explain their side of the story. So the board member brought it back to executive session, told the business administrator to make a copy for everyone but the superintendent, and then continued then to advocate on behalf of this staff member and trying to explain why they thought the superintendent's position was wrong. So essentially, then, the School Ethics Commission said that this member used their position to secure a privilege or advantage for a friend or, you know, employee, acted beyond their duties as a board member, overstepped into the day-to-day administration of the district, and usurped the superintendent's authority. So you can kind of see all the different letters of the alphabet, right? That they are essentially saying that that person violated. But again, just kind of seeing how this person was thinking, perhaps, that they were doing something good, but you can see how it falls way outside of, you know, how we should be conducting our work as board members. So last year, we kind of brought up this idea about the difference between recusing and abstaining, and just kind of wanted to make the distinction that I can abstain from something if I wasn't here at the last meeting, if I don't feel like I have enough information, if, just for no reason at all. But what if I can't vote on something because I have a legal conflict? So that should be identified in the records, and so that is when you would use the term recuse, like, I'm recusing myself from this discussion and vote because the minutes are now reflecting that I didn't vote because I didn't want to, but I didn't vote because I can't, because I have a conflict. So in making sure then that the records accurately reflect that that's the reason why I'm not voting. So the prohibited acts are essentially the reasons why we would have a conflict that we would need to recuse ourselves from. And it's saying if there's a benefit to you or to a member of your immediate family, and it goes to a business interest. The one we see most often is, is there kind of any unwarranted privilege or advantage to someone else as a result of this? Any financial involvement? So just kind of wanted to show an example here. In one of the cases from last year, there was someone that was filling in for the superintendent, they were the acting superintendent. At the board meeting, on the board agenda was a hundred and sixty, a list of substitute teachers, there was a list of a hundred and sixty names. Turned out one of them was the son of this acting superintendent. And so, you know, when you read your resolutions, it says upon recommendation of the superintendent, right? So then someone filed ethics charges and said, well, that gave her son an advantage because she was recommending him for employment as a substitute teacher. And the person was like, you know what, like, I didn't even know his name was on there. There's a hundred and sixty names on there, I didn't even know it. But essentially saying that that's kind of the level that they take looking at this potential privilege or advantage. So here are some other conflict of interest cases, and I'm not going to go again through all of those, so you can just go ahead and go through that one. So this is, you know, that the state defines relationships, like immediate family member, relatives. And a couple of years ago, they changed their definitions so that they aligned exactly with the nepotism policy that you have to have. So immediate family member is, you know, spouse, partner, dependent child residing in the same household, relative, much bigger, broader definition. I think we've said only cousin is the only thing we've seen missing off of this list. But we have seen ethics charges based on a cousin because if that person got an unwarranted privilege or an advantage, they had that term other, so that if it doesn't fit in here, what's more important is the privilege or advantage that someone got as a result of you being on the board. And so why this is important is because we can't hire the relative of a board member or the chief school administrator when it says limited exceptions. I mean, it kind of just goes back to this nepotism thing that I just talked about a minute ago with the assistant superintendent or the acting superintendent's son. But if you have in your nepotism policy that you can hire board members, say, children over the summer to be summer workers, or if you have in the policy that they can be substitute teachers, then you, you know, then that's that limited exception. If it's not in your policy, you can't do it, it has to be in the nepotism policy. The other exception would be if it was very difficult to fill a position, and you would have to, the superintendent would have to demonstrate to the county superintendent you did everything you could to find someone who wasn't a relative, but at the end of the day, this was, you know, the best person for the job. So we know then administrator can't exercise any authority over the relative, board members can't take part in any employment matters concerning the superintendent or any supervisors in the chain of command between the relative and the superintendent. And if you were doing a superintendent search, you wouldn't be able to participate in any aspect of it. So this then is now where we're seeing the impact of that first kind of advisory opinion that we talked about of having to be in the union. So now we had another, add another column of, yes, it could potentially be a conflict if they're not in the union, if they're benefiting from what the union negotiated. But essentially saying if you have an immediate family member or a relative that works in the district, you're pretty much out of negotiations regardless. If you, like, if you're a teacher in another district or someone like your immediate family member, like I said, would either be your partner or a dependent child residing in your household, if they worked in another district, you would not be able to participate in any of the negotiations until the board was completely done. Salary guides are done, memorandum of agreements done, you can vote to ratify the contract. If you have the relative, that big broader definition that works in another district somewhere, so essentially you're fine to both participate and vote absent any other conflict. And they would say, like, if your relative had, like, if they were the union rep perhaps, you know, you would need to speak with your attorney to see if that would be considered a conflict. So the other thing too is in some districts, the association may provide financial contribution to board members' campaigns. And saying if that was the case, then you would most likely have a conflict, and they usually have you sit out at least a year. So this was one of the advisory opinions that came out, not this past year, but the year before. But it's the first time we saw that if you had a relative that worked in the district, that it also impacted you by what committee you were able to serve on. And we've never really seen that level. So here was a situation where the board president's child was an instructional assistant. And typically, the board president would make assignments to committees and said to this president, you can't assign people to committees where your relative might be impacted and you can't serve on them. And they listed, like, personnel, negotiations, and instruction, and finance. I'm like, there's not much left after that, right? That's pretty much all of them, but just kind of showing that that, you know, kind of seeing that restriction at a newer level. This was, came from last year where there were two instances where board members went into executive session, had checked with the board attorney first, and then someone filed ethics charges against them, and it turned out that they were found guilty. So the, kind of like, in one situation, the board had a vacancy. They were, you know, invited people to come and apply for it, they were advertising. It turned out one of them was the board, one of the board member's husband. So that board member went into executive session when the board was discussing the candidates, including her husband, and said that it would be difficult for the rest of the board to have a conversation. They said, well, the attorney said I could. So this is kind of essentially saying that you are kind of responsible. So this is kind of essentially saying that you are kind of responsible for your own, you know, kind of knowing right and wrong, but we recognize that if you do ask the attorney, we might still find you guilty, but we might lessen the penalty, recognizing that that's what you did, so. So one of the other areas that, you know, is sometimes a little unclear for, you know, members too, is volunteering in schools, because that's how a lot of people get their start sometimes on the board, is, you know, being actively involved. So when the school ethics commission looks at, they said, okay, we're going to look at two different prongs, kind of what's your involvement with staff and students, how frequently are you enmeshed in the building, and then do you have authority to give and receive directions and orders to staff and students? And said if either one of those things are true, then let's kind of look at it from the lens of the code of ethics, and saying, okay, if I'm supposed to confide my board action to policymaking and appraisal, if I'm in the school all the time, then that could be an issue. So if I'm not administering the school, so what if I'm in there, and as a result of my volunteer activity, I have to give and receive orders and directions? And then saying not take any private actions that could compromise the board, and said sometimes you could blur that line between someone being your colleague, and someone being, you being a school official, and perhaps you have to vote on their contract, you have to vote on their raise, and sometimes that line could get blurred, so again.
Excuse me.
Yeah, so again, looking at it from those things. So, but, so the school ethics commission gives us some examples, and said, like, in one example, a board member's spouse worked in the district and did the school plays, and this board member used to help, and said, okay, when you think about all the rehearsals and the time spent, and the amount of interaction with students and staff, said, you know what, we would consider that to be too much. Someone had started a club in the middle school, it was something to do with coin collecting, met once a week with the kids, again, they said that's too much of frequent contact with students, and that person actually ended up leaving the board, and said they would rather keep doing the coin collecting club than serve on the board. But then there was a situation last year, where there was someone who had volunteered to help be a volunteer football coach, wasn't on the board at the time, and then the board had a vacancy, and they appointed this person to the vacancy during football season. So there's a month left, person's like, I'm going to stay and continue to help the team. Someone filed ethics charges against him. So when football season was over, he got off the team, and, you know, the school ethics commission was like, okay, like, we're going to say, yep, you're guilty, that you shouldn't, you know, we've identified that you shouldn't be volunteering for the school team, but they didn't issue a penalty. So just to kind of make that distinction clear, like, it's okay to be a coach, say, for a rec team, because the rec department has their own budget, they have their own bylaws, they have their own guidelines, but to be a volunteer coach for the schools team, then that's kind of what that distinction is. Some examples they gave of times when people had asked for an advisory opinion, they said, yes, this would be okay, you know, someone said, well, can I come in and, like, read Across America Day, can I chaperone a field trip? I'm a band parent, I helped, like, move the sets and move the equipment, and they said, that's all fine. But then someone had asked, okay, like, I was the president of the PTA, I'm a homeroom parent, like, so, you know, active involvement, and said, you know, so we're not going to say you can't do those things, but now that you're a board member, you have to do them within those two prongs of, you know, not having presence enmeshed in the school, and not giving and receiving orders. So if you can still carry out those roles, then you're fine to continue in those roles. So the last piece of what we're going to talk about then is social media. So the, kind of, one of the big language choices, I guess, that the school ethics commission kind of helped us use is the word nexus, and saying, is there a nexus, is there a link between what you posted and your role or membership on the board? And pretty much said content matters. So if, in, like, in the example here, there was a board member posted on their own page, but didn't, you know, and didn't use any kind of a disclaimer, and talked about a policy that she was actively involved in abolishing, said it was reviewed by board counsel, opposed by four board members. So it's pretty clear that there's a nexus or a link to her role on the board and what she posted. In this next example, there was a board member who just shared a campaign image of three people running for the board, didn't make any comments, it was on a personal page, so there's nothing that would suggest that I did anything above what my First Amendment rights are as a citizen, and I didn't connect this, there was no nexus to my work on the board. So the school ethics commission does suggest that we use a disclaimer, and it's just more to provide clarity, right, of kind of essentially saying that this is me, these are my opinions, I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. But also said importantly in this one case, that someone only used the first part of it, and didn't say, and I don't represent the views of the board, so it said that they left it unclear that they were creating the appearance that the entire board felt this way, by only using part of the disclaimer. So, but the other thing that they wanted to make clear is that you can't hide behind a disclaimer, that you can't do something that is connected to your board work and say, but I used a disclaimer, so that's okay. So that's why it kind of goes back to now saying content matters, it matters what you said, doesn't matter if, you know, even if you used a disclaimer, didn't, it's the, it's the content. So one of the things too is that most people, when they run for the board, either usually have some kind of a campaign websites, maybe a campaign social media page, and saying that once you get on the board, that you can no longer have a social media account that inherently indicates your position as a board member. So kind of essentially saying, you know, you would have to have, you know, private, you know, your own personal page, and so again, it just kind of goes back to that nexus. I mean, I was, had done ethics training in a board a couple of months ago, and there's a board member, well, I guess they were putting a McDonald's in her town, and she's like, I'm on social media all the time, I don't want this McDonald's, like, does that mean I have to stop now? And I'm like, well, but that's not really any relation or any nexus to your work as a board member, it's something that you as a community member, right? So kind of what that difference is. Uh huh. Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question along that, is that exact thing, it comes from last night, right? So, I don't know if you heard any, I don't know if you heard any of Dave's presentation, but, you know, so last night, town social media was blowing up about our meeting. If, for example, someone posts on Facebook that there's a sinkhole in our, you know, football field, and one of us goes on there and says, sorry folks, you know, misinformation, there's no sinkhole. Is that ever okay? Or should we leave it, like, what would you suggest, like, how, can we not handle that?
So, I mean, it, so one of the advisory opinions that came out last year from the school ethics commission said, like, you really have to be mindful of it, and said sometimes even if you would only just, like, post public links, it still could get you in trouble at some point, you know, so there's kind of one, you know, on one hand, you want to be respectful and responsive to the community, and it could just, like, if it's public information that's already been discussed somewhere in public, that could be one aspect of it, you just have to really be careful, because it sounds like that was a nexus to a board, or to a discussion, right? But it does, like, was that, was that a full board discussion, or was it just?
I don't know, it was just craziness.
Okay.
Somebody was posting something not true.
Okay.
Anonymously, yeah.
So.
I think I've posted, just, I mean, I posted, like, hey, there's a, a meeting, here's the link, like, please come. I forget what we were doing, beginning of the year, and what I said, you know.
Citizen advising.
Citizen advising, we're waiting for people to come.
But when somebody gets on and says they cut all these programs, and they're cutting all these teachers, and we know that's not the case, like, we all, most of us are not on social media.
I never go Facebook, yeah.
But we let it go, and we really.
Well, I mean, you can also make the administration aware that these posts are out there, and then, and then allow them to, you know, correct the facts, and.
You can start a fist initiative then.
I mean, I've just posted, like, the public, what was on our website.
The one time I'll allow it.
Like, this is the information on our website, please come to the meetings.
Yep, well, that's, it's just factual information, yep.
Yeah. I don't engage.
With the disclaimer.
I think that was one thing I posted, was like, actually, this is the information.
And you and I were talking about how much we wanted to turn the comments off for things like that. We can't, we couldn't figure out how to do it, but we had talked about, like, we don't even want comments, we don't even want likes, like, it's rhetorical, it's like a PSA, public service announcement, like, you're just putting it there.
I think it was to get people to come to the meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, some of it's just going to be common, like, coming down to common sense, right? And I would just say always err on being careful rather than not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't even go on.
And just kind of think about that, like, kind of ask yourself that question, like, is this, is there a nexus to what I'm posting, to my work on the board, or my role as a board member? And if you think the answer to that is yes, then I, you know, would think again about it, I guess. So kind of the very last piece of it, last slide, is just essentially saying, you know, that the school ethics commission kind of gave us some praise here of saying, you know, recognizing the value in, you know, the time that you put in, your skill, your effort to the community you serve, and just saying that that service is among the most important volunteerism that an individual can engage, and I think for any of you, you know, for all of us who have served our communities, you know, sometimes it, we may not feel like it's appreciated, but it is certainly, you know, just one of the most important ways that you can give back to your community. So just want to say, I appreciate you all, you know, taking the time tonight after a long meeting, but I, you know, there's, it's important to have these conversations, and so.
Yeah, thank you, Charlene.
Thank you for waiting for us.
So I don't know if you guys know, I'm retiring in a couple of months.
Oh, you are, there's some congratulations.
Congratulations, how wonderful for you.
May first, yep.
Oh, now like you're counting down.
Well, I mean, my husband's been retired for three years, and I kept saying, okay, next year, maybe next year, maybe next year, so.
Oh, wow, congratulations, Charlene.
So I just wanted to say what a pleasure it has been working with your board throughout the years, and it's just been an amazing experience, so.
Thank you so much, Charlene.
You really have helped us through so many pivotal points.
I know, it was, it was, yeah. Yeah, thank you, everyone.
That's a lot to you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
You've, you've always taken such complicated issues and broken them down so nicely into digestible, easily understandable nuggets of information, and just even the superintendent process, like, that was a lot, and thank you for walking us through that, I appreciate it.
Yep, I'll be at the May county, like, I'll be at the county meeting, and I'll still be around. Can't get rid of me that quickly yet, but, yeah, no, thank you.
I'm sure I'm there.
I'm sure I'm there.
Thank you for everything.
I'm sure I'm there.
I'm sure I'm there.
I forgot to.
I'm sure I'm there. If there were any comments, I'm ready.
I, yeah.
Question one? Thank you, Charlene. Capitulations are here, in front of her comments, none.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.